To borrow one of my, my chairs. There you go. Oh, we're ready to start. Good afternoon, everyone. It is Tuesday, October 19th, 2021, 1:00, and this is School Board Briefing. We are going to start today with a short presentation by District Educational Facilities about the District Educational Facilities Plan. And we have Ms. Kelly Lector, who is the Director of Budget, and she is joined by Melissa Rivera, Budget Analyst, and also Kathy Eba, Director of Planning, Growth, and Capacity. And so I will just hand it off to you ladies.
Thank you very much. Good morning or good afternoon, everyone. As she said, this is Melissa Rivera. I wanted to bring her up here. She is the Budget Analyst in the Budget Department that handles all of the capital stuff. And as you all know, that's a big job for somebody, a lot going on in capital. And so we just kind of want to make this real short and sweet. Kathy, and this is a group effort, this work plan, between my department and planning. I'm going to try and make this as short and sweet as possible. We've been through the capital plan multiple times with you all in June and July, and then again when it was approved in September. We talked about bringing it back to you each time, one of the projects, before we move forward with a go or no, just to make sure with price escalations and stuff that we look at everything to make sure that this is really what we want to do. We still plan on continuing to do that. The work plan that we are bringing to you is a five, 10, 20-year plan. The five-year plan is exactly what was approved in the final budget with one exception, and that is the number of, the amount for the C O and D S. That came on this document from the state. It's hardcoded in. We are going to go back and look at that estimate, the estimates that they have in here. It's about a million and a half more than we had put in the plan, which would be great if that's where it's going to come in at. We are also going to, like we had talked about, look at the sales tax and impact fees estimates to make sure that we're on track with those, and look at increases or decreases that are needed in those areas. But right now, this is the approved plan from the final budget for the five-year as it stands. The 10 and 20-year, as it goes out, gets a little bit more iffy, as everyone knows. Everything changes. So this is our best guess at this time of what we're looking at with the student growth and the numbers for the 10 and 20-year as we go out. This is a required plan. It will be presented to you in a public hearing on November 2nd, as required by Florida statute. So we wanted to give you a chance to ask any questions that you may have at this time regarding the plan. So with that, I just want to open it up if there's any questions.
Okay. Ladies, who has a question or a comment?
I'm sorry, I'm pulling it up.
No one?
I'm just pulling mine up.
Give everybody a minute to think.
Sorry, I went through that really quick, I'm sorry.
No, that's, that's, that's okay.
On the, uh, mask.
All right, yes, go ahead, Ms. Gittens.
Okay, I think it's page 10 on the capacity projects. Do we have a list or all the data besides FISH of capacity that we're working off of to do this? And this new middle school in the East Zone, is that Lambs?
No, that is a new middle school that's being proposed in the, in the middle. That was in our five-year work plan as well, or five-year plan.
And not to be open until '24?
Yeah, '24, '25 school year is when it's currently slated to be open.
Is that the first one and the only one that you're, that is on here? I mean, did I miss?
No, there's another middle school.
Is there any middle school prior to '24, '25?
No, there's the addition of the, the new Lehigh Middle, and then this middle.
And how many seats will we gain in the East Zone with the addition on the old Lehigh?
With the old Lehigh? Let me, I'm gonna pass this over to Kathy real quick.
And just before you get in there, Ms. Eba, just to kind of draw your attention to the next sections in there, because there's additional schools out in the East Zone that are slated. If you go to the Additional Project Schedules, which begins on page 12, that has additional schools, such as another elementary in the East Zone, the K Innovation School, the, the new middle school East Zone, new high school in the East Zone, all those are down kind of lower in that area as well. Just want to make sure I draw your attention to those sections as well, not just the capacity, the capacity projects.
Okay, so the ones that you just mentioned, Dr. Savage, the new elementary and the, on page 12, you said?
Yes. If you look in page 12 under the heading Additional Project Schedules, you'll see a significant number of additional projects that were located in the five-year capital, I'm sorry, the 10-year capital plan. Those are there, but these are actually for the first five years as well. They're just, it's additional category in there if any of the team wants to expand on that.
Yes, they're, they're separated because the state has a, what they call a survey, and the schools that are approved by the survey, already approved in the survey, go under the first setting, and those that have yet to be approved through the survey process are, are the ones on page 12. And those are the ones that still have to go through the survey process.
But am I correct in saying that if we needed a school and we had the money and the, the tax money that we would not need state approval, we could use tax money to build a school?
You do not.
So you don't need state approval, but you still need to do a spot survey? If, if it is not in our five-year plan survey, when we, and we will be opening up our new five-year plan survey this June, it will be due in June of '23. But anything that's not in the current five-year plan survey does need to have a spot survey accomplished. It doesn't mean the state needs to give approval for it, but we do need to get a spot survey approved by the state.
Okay, and at the top of page 12, that new elementary school East Zone, is that J that is existing now?
Yes, that's J.
So basically, until 2025, the only things that the East Zone will have is the remodeling of Lambs and J.
And the addition at, and the addition at MM. And, well, that's in 20, that opens 20.
So here's what I would like to note, just, just bottom line. Between those three additions, between now and 2025, how many additional seats will we have?
I, I don't have that information in front of me, but we'll include that in the board update this week.
Okay. I, I just want to make this point. I remember sometime last year, beginning of '20, and I crunched some of the numbers and presented to the board the fact that at that particular time, we had enough middle school students to fill a one and a half brand-new middle schools. And that was in 2020. And it, I'm sorry, it's just not adding up that in 2025 is when we actually will be addressing those issues. They've been going on for a while. And it's, it's not, I'm not just talking about one zone, I'm talking about the district as a whole, and all of us up here should think in terms of all children. And if there's any child in Lee County School District that does not have the appropriate resources, we all should be concerned about that. And I don't know.
Okay, is there anybody else that has a comment or question? Okay, Ms. Jordan, and then Ms. Javonelli.
Yes, thank you, ladies, for presenting this. Can you please tell me, is this the, the list that the schools send to you all, like, in the beginning of the year? It has to be done, the maintenance and everything?
No, these are the routine maintenance, the plans that are to be done, the CIP things that the school sends, sends us, there's a line item for those, separate, I think it's 250,000 is set aside to do the things sent in from the school's request.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because I know I was listening to one of the PTAs and they were speaking on a sign. Would that be something that's totally separate from here? Okay.
Yes, yes.
Okay, Ms. Javonelli?
So I'm going to piggyback off of Ms. Gittens, because why isn't East Zone moved up to have something sooner? And that, I guess that's for, that's for the superintendent, really. I mean, why is it so far out? Because I see that we're gonna, we're not going to have seats for our, for our students in the growth out in the East.
I will ask our, after, I'm just going to kind of briefly respond to that, and I'll ask our planning folks to fill in the gaps on the, in terms of the capacity and the seats, as you're kind of framing it. But, but what, essentially, each of our projects, they start with, just like you have in front of you, the plan, that they are demonstrated that there is an effort and an interest in building a school in a particular area. And it manifests in a document such as this. It says, "We are going to build it, and here's when we're going to build it." But once we decide we want to build it, there are a number of things that have to happen. It has to be budgeted, you know, we have to have it designed, and it takes a significant period of time, and our school's about 12 months to design a school, and that's even starting with our existing blueprints and all the site work that goes along with that. And then it's about 18 months of construction after that. So what you're really talking about from the moment you decide and have it budgeted and planned, it's really, at minimum, a two-and-a-half-year process. And that's if all things go well. That's if the supply chains and all those other issues. And so it's just, it's a pretty substantial ask to do that. And so what I want to kind of direct your attention to is that if you were to compare this particular work plan to, let's say, prior year's plans, you're going to notice a substantial increase in the East Zone construction projects. But again, if we wanted to build one next year's, let's say, there's prerequisite steps. So everything kind of has to follow a logical progression of steps in order for us to actually open the doors to a school and in, in increase that new permanent capacity in those pieces. So I can't go back in time and change what was, but I can certainly say, if you were to compare these plans over the years, you're going to see a substantial increase, not just in the amount of schools we are putting in the East Zone, but even when we're putting the East Zone. So while there may have been no schools listed in the first five years in the past, you now see a number of them. That's why I wanted to draw your attention to those pieces, because they are there. And so by us adding them in in June, when we produced the first draft of the capital plan, the concept was to demonstrate to this board and to the community that we see a dramatic opportunity to increase the number of physical buildings out in the East Zone. Now, that doesn't particularly explain the capacity side, which I think is very important. Capacity, you know, in, in our mind is, okay, so how can we actually assign children to go to a school? Well, that takes all of the permanent capacity we have in our physical buildings, and it also takes into account all of our portable seats, which we use, because there are students in those portables, and, and a significant number of those portables. Not only do we do that, but because of the choice system, the way it's currently set up, we, and the capacity that we do have available in some of our permanent buildings, we actually bus a substantial amount of students from where they live out in the East Zone, in many cases, greater Lehigh, to actually travel in to town. Again, I was principal at one of those schools, James Stevens and so forth, I was also an assistant at Dunbar High School. A lot of our students who are in those schools in that particular area, in Fort Myers, actually have a lot of students who live out in the East Zone, Manatee, Okanagan, among many others. So, so just the configuration of the way we do this, we actually bring a lot of students in there. So we do have the capacity for students, because that's how we staff our buildings currently. It's, we have building room, and that's where children go, and, and they are assigned to those schools. So the capacity as it stands today is what allows us to then enroll all of our students the way it is. Now, as we look over the years, what are we trying to do? One of the priorities, among others, is diminish the number of portables that we have, so that the, in terms of that students are occupying those portables, we want to replace those with permanent physical capacity, which has certainly always been an objective. But right now, we've increased that as a priority, and as is evidenced by this plan. Kathy, if you don't mind, Ms. Eba, just kind of highlighting kind of what I'm talking about on the capacity side, just so that there's, you know, there's a clear understanding of this.
So one of the reasons, and I, I know this isn't a popular thing to say, but it has to be reiterated, is one of the reasons that we are now able to really look at permanent capacity in the, in the East Zone is because the portables are aging out. Portables, if we own a portable, the state statute is for 20 years, that is permanent capacity as far as the state is concerned. They see that the state makes no jurisdiction, makes no difference between that, a building and a portable, if we own it. If you rent it or you lease it, then it doesn't count on your permanent student station count. But if you own it, and most of our portables currently we own, they count in our permanent student stations. The reason that we are now able to dramatically increase our permanent capacity in permanent buildings is because the portables that we own are aging out. They, they were built, they were bought about 20 years ago in our five-year plan survey that I mentioned that we will be doing next year and adopting by June of '23. The portables that we own right now will be able to be taken off of our records. So that is one of the reasons you see such an increase today over the number of student stations that we are building in the East Zone, is because we are now at a point where those portables, while we'll still own them and we will still use them for swing space and to capture unexpected growth or any of those other things, we, they're now free space to us. They, we have them, we can use them so long as we continue to maintain them, but we don't have to, they don't have to count against us in terms of our capacity number as the state looks at us. So if we own, so just if we own 100 portable, if we own 100 student stations in portables, or we own 100, or we have 100 student stations in a building, up until that portable is over 20 years old, the state sees no difference in them. The, the key now is that they are aging out, and we are able to then replace those portables with permanent student stations. Is, Dr. Savage, is that what you were asking me to discuss?
Yes, just, there's a misunderstanding about capacity relative to our FISH, as well as our program capacity, which is the capacity we assign to these buildings. And that's very important, because we assign the capacity to the buildings we have, and we set up our choice system and our enrollment all around that piece. So it's very important that we make sure we don't conflate all those terms and imply that we don't have room for the children. It's simply a matter of where the students are currently assigned, where the capacity is available within the buildings, and then the fact that we bus students all around the district to serve that piece. What we're, what we're trying to make efforts to do is build more facilities where the students actually live, and reconsider the way that we currently assign our students, hence the proximity plan. That's really about trying to just get a more common sense approach to this while still permitting the opportunity for choice. I just want to make sure we kind of set the record straight about the East Zone side of this, that the best way to compare our plans for the East Zone is to look at prior year's plans and reconcile them with this year's plan, and how dramatically different it is in terms of the plans for the East Zone, with an understanding that while we do have a number of schools coming along that '24, '25 school year, to do it sooner than that would be a significant challenge, considering you can't, how do you bypass the 18 months of construction, the 12 months of design work, and then, of course, any procurement work that has to go into a contract, six months potentially getting through those pieces? So you're really talking about a three-year process. So this shows a very ambitious attempt to dramatically increase the footprint of permanent buildings in the East Zone, including a new high school that was put into this year's plan that did not exist in the prior year's plan, including two middle schools in the first five years. Again, that was not part of the plan. So just trying to make sure that as we're having this conversation, we can focus on the plan in front of us here, which really is a substantial deviation from, from prior year plans.
So when it comes to, and thank you, about the difference of capacity versus student stations, there are three numbers that we use in Lee County. The first number is number of student stations. And except at the, except for elementary, number of student stations does not equal capacity. So if you have a 1,000-student station elementary school, that is 1,000 capacity. But if you have a 1,000-student station middle school, or a 1,000-station high school, I know those are both small, but I'm going to keep the same number. At the middle school level, your capacity number is not, is 8, 90% of 1,000. So your capacity is really only 900 of, of 1,000. There's 100 student stations that are not counted in capacity for FISH. That's a state standard. At the high school level, it's 95%. So there's 50 students out of that 1,000 that are not counted in your capacity. So your elementary is 100% of your FISH student stations, your middle school is 90% of your student stations, and your high school is 95%. And then, and I'm going to turn to Kelly and let her explain this, there is the capacity number that we assign annually to each school. And I'll let her describe how that happens.
So we look, when we do that, we do look at the capacity of the school, and then we look at where the students have been and where we think they're going to come in, and we place them based on that. We try to grow growth in some schools that are underutilized in order to help those schools that are overutilized. Not always easy, because that means busing of children further than what they usually are, but we try to do that as much as we can. But we base that on the capacity at the school and past history, and where the kids are coming in, and where we need to place them, and we work around those numbers. I also wanted to answer the question from before with the, in the East Zone in the first, in this five-year plan, there's one middle school, or one elementary, two middle schools, a high school, and the Innovation K-8 School, which will generate about 7,200 student stations.
Okay, and Ms. Javonelli, you had something else?
Yeah, back to the, the portables that are aging out. Are those portables all in the East Zone that are aging out?
Not all of them, but the majority of them are.
And how long have they been there? Have they been there for the 20 years in that very spot?
I would have to look at the history of them.
No. They originally were in the West Zone, one of the West Zone.
Okay, so they've been moved around during that 20-year timeframe? But they went from west to east? Okay. And how many, so are there any in the, in the South Zone that is aging out?
Yes.
How many are aging out there?
I don't have those numbers in front of me, but we do have, we have portables across the district that are aging out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and Ms. Gittens, you had something else to ask? Go ahead.
A couple of quick questions. One, you said the 102 stations at the Innovation School, and the location of that school, if we go into proximity, is really not going to help the East Zone because of the growth on Daniels and all of that area. By the time that those housing areas fill up, there will not, it's not going to be a viable school for the East Zone.
So when we developed the, that school, and I'm looking at David, is in J. So when we developed J, which is the zone, the proximity zone that, that school is placed in, we specifically designed that, that zone with the help of, of Davis and Davis Demographics and their assessment of where the students are, to include large components of Lehigh, so that we could capture and ensure that, long-term, those are captured in their zone. So there is a, the, a large portion of the duplex area of Lehigh, and kind of the southwest corner of Lehigh is in, is in Zone J, which is where the Innovation School is slated to be located.
Okay, and I understand that, but as growth continues, I thought that our purpose of proximity was to reduce transportation. And if you have a school right here, and there are 1,500 houses around it, how are you going to tell those people they can't go to that school, and it is far enough away that it's going to leave out a, a large chunk of the students that need a school? Now, at one point, going back last year, a year before, the conversation when you were talking about where you were putting schools, the Innovation School was even mentioned as possibly putting the Innovation School as one of the schools we needed. And then suddenly, that was moved to a, a different area. But my, my whole point is, folks, I, and I understand, no offense at all to anyone, I've heard the speech over and over again about the process and how long it takes. I've heard that many, many times, and I do understand it. But if we keep putting it off, I know we're doing something now, but where I cannot wrap my head around, if the need is so big right now, that we are still spending time and energy and staffing and everything to build a school where we do not have that urgency. And I will never understand that. When, when you handed this paper out with the portables and all that back in February of '21, and it's, it's 95 of the, of the portables in the East Zone were owned, and they were deplorable. And because I brought it forward, they put a Band-Aid on them and fixed them up, because we don't have the space to take those kids out of them. 22 were rented. One of my questions was, why are we still leasing them? You know, I, it, anyway.
Okay.
It's very convoluted, and the last thing I want to say is, please explain to me how the three schools that you're basing building Quadruple A on are Three Oaks Middle, Three Oaks Elementary, and Pine Woods. And that's where the 117% is supposed to come from. Well, on here, the utilization, and I don't know if that's different from capacity, Three Oaks Middle is 101, Three Oaks Elementary is 112, and Pine Woods is 103. There is no way mathematically that you come up with 117%. So please.
corner of Lehigh is in, is in Zone J, which is where the Innovation School is slated to be located.
Okay, and I understand that, but as growth continues, I thought that our purpose of proximity was to reduce transportation. And if you have a school right here and there are 1,500 houses around it, how are you going to tell those people they can't go to that school? And it is far enough away that it's going to leave out a, a large chunk of the students that need a school. Now, at one point, going back last year, a year before, the conversation when you were talking about where you were putting schools, the Innovation School was even mentioned as possibly putting the Innovation School as one of the schools we needed. And then suddenly that was moved to a, a different area. But my, my whole point is, folks, I, and I understand, no offense at all to anyone, I've heard the speech over and over again about the process and how long it takes. I've heard that many, many times, and I do understand it. But if we keep putting it off, I know we're doing something now, but where I cannot wrap my head around, if the need is so big right now, that we are still spending time and energy and staffing and everything to build a school where we do not have that urgency. And I will never understand that. When, when you handed this paper out with the portables and all that back in February of '21, and it's, it's 95 of the, of the portables in the east zone were owned, and they were deplorable. And because I brought it forward, they put a Band-Aid on them and fixed them up because we don't have the space to take those kids out of them. 22 were rented. One of my questions was, why are we still leasing them? You know, I, it, anyway.
Okay.
It's very convoluted, and the last thing I want to say is, please explain to me how the three schools that you're basing building Quadruple A on are Three Oaks Middle, Three Oaks Elementary, and Pine Woods, and that's where the 117% is supposed to come from. Well, on here, the utilization, and I don't know if that's different from capacity, Three Oaks Middle is 101, Three Oaks Elementary is 112, and Pine Woods is 103. There is no way mathematically that you come up with 117%. So please explain if my math is wrong.
I don't know the document that was handed out at that point, so I would have to go back and...
No, I'm looking at this that you have up here.
Oh, this, okay. Which, where was that?
On the utilization, the column...
Section.
Of the utilization, and that was 21, 22. Three Oaks Elementary is 112% utilization, Pine Woods 103, and Three Oaks Middle was 101. How do we get 117?
So the, the numbers that we're presenting today are, including of our COVID period, which we lost, where we saw a decrease in utilization across the district. And we are currently evaluating and will be presenting in an upcoming meeting those, those numbers and how COVID has affected our utilization across the district.
Okay, and we are, we're running quite a bit over, so I'll entertain, since Ms. Patrica hasn't had a chance to speak, and if anybody else has something short to say, and then we need to move on. Okay, Mrs. Patrica?
Thank you. So refresh my recollection, please. How many portables estimate, I don't want an exact number, do we have across the district?
178 is around here. I'm just helping out.
Let them, let them answer, please. But what it sounds like is, and if you don't have that right at your fingertips, it sounds like we've had a lot of questions about, and I know there has been information shared in the past on this, but maybe just an update, not just the portables that, and, and I know similar information has been shared, but if you just reshare that when you have a chance and give us the number of portables in each zone, whether they're rented or owned, and the ages of them, so we'll know where they're age, aging out, and you just send that to the whole board. Mrs. Patrica, what else did you have to ask?
So I guess the, the, what I'm, what I'm trying to get to is, it's my understanding that about 60% of our portables are utilized in the east zone. And as I look at these lists that you've put in front of us today, about 66% of the funding is going to the east zone, and about 33, 34% of the funding is going to the rest of the district. And I understand that all of this construction, all of, all of these upgrades and updates are not all to increase capacity. The, the other thing that I understand is, and correct me if I'm wrong, it is staff's desire to eliminate as many portables as humanly possible, but the state of Florida does not really permit us to do that because we have to prove the need before we can build the school. So as much as we might want to come in front of the board and the community and say, our plan over the next five years will eliminate every portable, that would be a lie because as new growth occurs, we have to put those kids in portables. So it's, is that an inaccurate understanding of the situation we're in?
No, it's not. So first, we, our goal is in the next couple of months, as part of the process that we're going to be developing in the schedule, we're going to be developing for the next capital improvement plan, we are going to do a, a workshop specifically on these issues. So you're going to see all of this in very detailed information in the next couple of months between now and January. So that's first. Secondly, you are, the, the understanding of the state's relationship to portables is exactly as you said. Even though we will age them out and we will no longer have to use them as capacity for us, so they will no longer count towards our capacity total number, they will still, the state still expects you to use portables as one of, there are a number of different tools the state expects us to use, including portables, that allow for the immediate capacity and placement of students while in a growth position because, so I, I've used this analogy many times in my time as a school planner. If you want to build a road, or a police station, or a park, or a utility line, and you're a local government, go ahead, do so. If you want to build a school, go talk to Tallahassee first. So the, the state requires us to show what they call need, and need is over capacity. And you only get over capacity if your student stations exceed your, your number of, your capacity number, but I'm, but that includes, if you own portables, they are concluded in the capacity number. I know that doesn't make sense. I know people think of portables as temporary capacity, but if you own them, the state looks at those for 20-year period as permanent capacity. If you have any, and we have just a couple of the concretables, those are, the state looks at those as capacity for 30 years. So for, there's one at Riverdale, for example. So, so things that, that other people may look at as temporary capacity, if you own them, then the state looks at them as permanent capacity. And the reason that you would want to rent them, even though there, it is much more, it's much more costly to rent them versus own them, is just this, because if you rent them, they're not looked at as your permanent capacity. So it allows you to build schools in permanent buildings quicker than if you own them.
All right, my final question is, beginning on page... Where can I find it? Can I think? Project schedules. Those are the construction projects that have been approved by the state. The state has said, you have proven the need in terms of capacity to build those schools. Is that, is that fair?
Those are the ones that have been, a spot survey has been done on them and gone through the state process.
Okay, and then as we move down to page 12, we have projects that, we will do the spot surveys, and even if the state says you don't need those seats, we can still build with the half penny sales tax, correct?
Right.
So we do have to, in, in my estimation, we do have to look to the taxpayers and explain to the taxpayers, even though the state said you don't need this, we're building it anyway. And, and there's the, sort of the efficiency, we answer to the taxpayers, being good stewards of the tax... I have to assume that these state statutes are in place to keep school districts in check and not building schools that aren't needed. So the other side of this is, we are supposed to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars and following state statutes really ensures that we do that. So I would suggest some kind of an education campaign or, or some talking points or some explanation we can give to the community as we get into these building projects to, to explain why they're needed, even though the state didn't say they were needed, if I'm making sense. Thank you, those are my comments.
Okay, and presenters, did you have anything else you needed to add? Okay, we really are way over on this, and I'm going to thank you very much, and school board members, yeah, and Mr. Rickenbacher is going to come forward to set up his presentation. I'm, I'm going to remind you that we do want to be cognizant of, of time, and although it's, I love to have the discussions, we, I am going to start timing if we run way over on this. So please be aware of that, and if you have any other questions, send it on to, to the ladies to finish the answers. Ms. Fisher, welcome. We are right now at Capitol Project Update, and this is Mr. Scott Rickenbacher, who is the Director of Construction Project Management.
Bear with me, it was shut down, so I've got to find it.
I'm sorry? You need some help with the...
Christ, I can't put it right on the screen to make life a lot easier. Thank you. All right, good afternoon, board members, superintendent, Ms. Clay Bruno. This is your Capitol Project Update for October 2021. Lots to talk about pre-K8, Quadruple A, pre-K8, and Astero. If you weren't aware, we got our approval from the zoning committee of the Village of Astero on the 12th of October. So we've met the needs of the design, they've given us our approval, and we're moving forward. So that was a big accomplishment. In addition, we received a GMP from the subcontractor. And to update you folks, it, inflation has hit us. The assumed GMP, I just want to give you some statistics. This is our phase one process where we get estimations through the 30%, 60%, and obviously 100% GMP from both the architect and from the construction management firm. So we started out in schematic design with the architect, assuming it would be about $55 million. The construction manager thought it would be about $68.8 million. That was at about 30% schematic design. When we got into design development, when the drawings came in at 60%, the architect rose to 77 million, and the construction manager went to 74 million. So as they start coming together, then construction managers are always going to have more fingers on the pulse of the cost of the market because that's what they do every day for their business. So there was, and the architect was roughly a 20% increase at that 60% station, whereas the construction manager had risen about 7% in his estimation. Then we got our GMP. The GMP right now stands at $79.8 million, and that's the final GMP that was advertised, put out for bid, and compiled. So I take that number, and I now develop a total project cost estimate. And right now, the total project cost that I am seeing is approximately $93 million. I believe that with some trimming, I can get it down to around 92. We're working with our FF and E components, which is IT and furnishings. We usually work with a percentage, but we're asking them to tighten that down and, and come into a number. So what I can tell you is, because of inflation, what you're finding is, we've realized about a 14% inflation factor on this project, and we always knew that this was going to be the first one out of the box that was going to tell the story for the next three years. So you can assume an elementary is going to be the price of a middle, a middle is going to be the price of a high school, and a high school is going to go well over 100 million. So I just wanted to give, share that with you. That's hot off the press. We will be doing a formal briefing, I believe, November 2nd, where I will go through the GMP with you and go over all the lines and so forth that are partaking to this before I hopefully bring the total project cost approval for this product to you in December, I believe, December 7th meeting. Okay, next up, Cape Elementary HVAC, where you're in the punch list and closeout phase right now that's getting prepared to go to audit. Cypress Lake High School renovation, this is a new project that we took, took over for maintenance. We're out in the field and we're engaging in continuing contracts with vendors, and the construction department will be overseeing this for maintenance as part of their budget. Fort Myers High School renovation is preparing to go to internal audit for review. We're closing out. That job was completed successfully. Another piping job that my department is taking, is overseeing for maintenance will be the Fort Myers High School repiping. Again, we're meeting with designers, we're going out there putting our continuing contracts together and getting that design started. Fort Myers Middle School Academy, another waterline renovation that we took over for maintenance, we'll be overseeing that, and again, we're preparing for continuing contract engagement and design documents for that. Fort Myers Technical College renovation. We're right now at about 60% documents, drawings. We're actually about, I think I told you this before, we're about a million over on what the proposed budget of 12.7 would be. So we're looking into grants to help support that project. Franklin Park Elementary rebuild. All contracts have been executed, and right now we're submitting the documents, and we're getting prepared to issue the notice to proceed, which I believe the superintendent's already signed, but we sit on it until such a time as all the documents, insurance certificates, and so forth are in place to begin the work. So we're, we're already starting design meetings, so that's underway. And I believe the movement on this, although it hasn't been 100% vetted, I believe the movement on this is to stage portables in the field across from James Stevens. That seems to be the most appropriate, but you'll be getting briefed on that shortly. That would be the closest to the school, would have food service, has all utilities, permitting and driveway access, access points already there. Gee Weaver Hips Pre-K Elementary Edition, we're underway, and the design meetings have already begun for that addition project as well. These are just some of the projects. We have a product manager in my staff that is half-funded by the capital and also half-funded by the food service department with federal funding. He oversees, these are some of the designs and freezer-cooler renovations that we're doing at various schools across the district. J Elementary and MM New Construction. We have just received our, our package, our structural package, 60% for the drawings. We should have at, probably around January, a pretty good feel of where this GMP is going to go. We threw some numbers in there so that you can see at 30%. This is your reporting to you of the cost impact on J Elementary and the MM Edition. You can see right now that on MM, the Owen Ames &amp; Kimball is projecting a $3.7 million cost of construction. The design team is at 3.7. And on the J Elementary, the design architect is looking at about $34.5 million, and the architect is at about 34.6. And that's because we're having these meetings, we're collaborating, so they're a lot tighter than I would have expected, but that's, they're working together on there. So right now you're seeing about $270 per square foot. Let's see, what else can I tell you? So we're right now, that's the station point. Again, that's only 30% drawings. As we get further into development at 60%, those numbers will tighten up a little closer until we get the GMP, and I'll report that station to you as well. But you can surely anticipate that this is going to have an inflation factor once the GMP goes out to, to bid as well. Lee County Public Education, re-roofing. I'm sure you're all very aware, I hope we're not disrupting your daily work environment or your sense of smell. We do start them at 4:00 AM in the morning so that they can get all of the major nasty noise and dust done before you all show up for work. And then we spend the rest of the day putting back the insulation and the first ply roofing to prevent your, any floods from coming in the evening, and that, this job's progressing very well. Orangewood Elementary, we just sent out invitations to negotiate for this HVAC project, so that'll be happening the end of this week and in the middle of next week. And the design is about 85% complete. Okay, the duplicate slide, but that's basically the same, same slide for the renovation project. Riverdale High School. We've had meetings, and we, we provided staff with two different scenarios that were whittled down from about 5 to 6. The scenario that was received was what we call Scenario D, which was preferential to the school-based administration. And what it does is, it's going to, due to the cost of this project and the engagement in here and the new buildings required, this too, we had a budget of about $41.5 million, and this is projecting anywhere from a 5 to a $15 million increase over the $41 million to do everything that is required for the, the gym replacement, for the seats replacement, which also will replace, at the end of the game, will replace the portables that are out there, I believe they have about 14. And it shifts the, expands the cafeteria, which was severely undersized for a school with that capacity. And it also provides where the old gym was that didn't meet the needs and the capacity, that will become a multipurpose room for the school and for testing and things that they didn't have those areas before. So again, that, we projected, that's been the direction that we've been given by staff to move forward with, and we're beginning that design and completing those documents. And I will be reporting the estimates and the station costs as we move forward. But right now I can tell you, it was budgeted for 41.5 totally, and already we know that we're going to be somewhere between 5 and 15 million to, to perform this. Skyline Elementary, another kitchen project through my project manager, cooler freezer replacement. Test Academy, this is another repiping that we are overseeing for the maintenance department. Sunshine Elementary, another cooler freezer, you know, we do six, seven jobs every year with their department, so you can see we're keeping up on our cafeteria work. Three Oaks Elementary, another cooler freezer replacement. Trafalgar Elementary, cooler freezer replacement. Trafalgar Elementary, cooler-freezer replacement, sorry if this gets monotonous, but Transportation East, that job is underway. We got our approval from traffic, some minor striping, and we will be starting that job shortly. We're collecting our insurance, our bonds. All the contracts have been signed, and that will get underway to replace the old rotted portables out in Transportation East and provide a new facility for the transportation staff out in that project area. Tropical Isles Elementary, freezer-cooler renovation. Villas Elementary, another maintenance project that we took over for oversight, which is a plumbing upgrade. VPAA and Old Lambs. Right now, we've put an emphasis on the remodeling of the Old Lambs. We've seen the concept drawings. We've worked and have had the principal participate in all of our designs. It's really coming along nice, and I can tell you, the product team is excited. And I think at the end of the day, when we're done with this, it's going to be a noticeable transformation, providing a fresh new look to that campus and that school. We're at about $11.5 million. Now, remember, I had $24 million allotted for construction. And we've had to add sprinkler in here and do a number of things to really refresh this school, so we're at about $11.5 million is our estimate now. It will leave us enough to do an auditorium building. However, the county has come and asked for that auditorium building to be hardened as a shelter. So obviously, the remainder of that money will not support the hardening. We've alerted EOC. Planning has a meeting with them, I believe tomorrow, to talk about that. They're working with us. They want to be our partner, and they certainly don't want to affect us. So I'll know more as to whether they allow me just to build a standard auditorium building or whether it's going to have to be hardened. So that'll determine where we go with that. And you can see the estimates that were provided for by the architect and the construction manager. The architect was at about 9.5, and the construction manager is at 11.5 for construction costs. Single-point entries. I told you, we had, this is all the things that my crew are going out and looking at schools and getting ready for it to really kick off all the single-point entries, that construction division, about 22 projects. So you'll see, this will be a slide every month. You'll see that contracts are issued, architects are out there. We're preparing the drawings, and you'll see that move forward. Quite a few, a lot of information in there, so feel free to look at it, and you can track where your schools of interest are moving. In addition, we had the construction change order reporting. Were there any questions on the change order reporting this month?
Any questions, board members? And I am going to be limiting these to three minutes apiece. Ms. Morgan?
So you're saying that it's a 14% inflation factor for our projects. Other districts are building schools, I assume. I know there are some districts that are still expanding. Are we looking at their per pupil or per station costs versus our per pupil station costs and looking for ways that they might be cutting costs as a result of this inflation factor? I just think that continuing to move forward with our designs without doing any comps with respect to perhaps innovation or in materials or design, I just think we need to do that. So that's my first comment. My second comment is that you suggested that we were looking for grants to support the tech college overages. My question is of Dr. Savage, why aren't we looking for grants before we even start building these schools? Why aren't we looking for what it is that's out there that may meet our needs? We shouldn't be going for grants. Second, that should be upfront with our commitment. So those are my two comments. Thank you.
Okay, so Mr. Rickenbacker, do you want?
Sure.
You answer the first one, and then we'll go.
Quickly, I can tell you, no, we haven't looked at other school districts. This right now is a market-related issue. My partners at the county and other areas have concurred. What you're seeing right now, to give you, for instance, liability insurance on this particular project, using our comparables from when we did Gateway High and MM Middle, have gone up $1 million. So all these people you saw getting the roofs and the advertisements, it's driven the insurance rates through the roof, and we're seeing that. Plumbing, PVC piping, $0.5 million. Anything that has metal involved in it has gone up 20%, 25%, 30%. Durations to acquire materials, as you heard me tell you in the last meeting, although we've always been successful in opening a school on the required opening date, say August 1st, materials lead times could put us in a predicament at some point in time where that's not possible. We have things doubling. Generators, 44 months. Elevators, 40 months. Roofing materials, although that's why we pre-ordered and stockpiled everything here, you can't get roofing materials now. So it's industry-wide. We certainly can provide some data from other districts if you'd like. I'll reach out to our partners, but this is a lack of, it's supply and demand. It's just not, the market is depleted.
Yeah, and I understand. And my question's really more for Dr. Savage. The question is, you know, as we look to build five and 10 years out, you know, are we doing the same old, same old, or are we looking for opportunities and efficiencies, et cetera, that take us out of the same old, same old and, you know, support us from a cost point of view? So it's really not for you. I mean, I'm interested, but I'm more concerned about how we're planning long-term. Thank you.
Absolutely. Yeah, I think that's a fair question. Just to kind of piggyback on Scott's point, one of the first things that I did, kind of my role, was analyze across the state the cost per construction, looking for efficiencies, where we were over, under-budgeting relative to the various segments that go into that total cost construction. So a good example was that I found that our FFNE numbers in our particular projects were actually a substantial culprit in driving up our cost. And so while we put that as one of our legislative asks, in reality, when you look longitudinally backwards, that was an opportunity for us to change our percentage that we assigned to that FFNE value. So that's just one example of an efficiency to try to get us in a more responsible place. Second question that you had specifically about the grants upfront, I know that a substantial effort on the grants department is just locating grants, not just academic, but of all different types. And sometimes things even referred to as grants, state funding opportunities and things like that. It's part of why it's so important we work with our county partners as well, just because sometimes we're accessible to monies that we wouldn't otherwise have even known. So just having stronger partnerships and that effort allows us to benefit mutually for things that have potential shared use, you know, examples of the storm events that we are so commonly having. So mentioning the auditorium, the hardening costs, there are things referred to as grants that in fact allow us to get dollars, whether it's through, you know, some of the generator upgrades and things that we've done. There's just a substantial opportunity. What I would ask is that, I'm going to ask the business services and our grants department for something in the Board Weekly, just to kind of dialogue with the Board about, these are some of the proactive measures we use, but I would argue, can we never do enough? It's very important, and we continue to push the envelope on that. So we'll give you kind of our, just a response to that question in the Board Weekly, if that works for the Board.
So thanks for now. Go on. Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Gittens, and then Ms. Jordan.
Okay, I have three things, but I want to make a comment on what Ms. Morgan just said. Just this week, Glades County received a $5.8 million grant from the governor, from Tallahassee, to do a technical center. Personally, I feel that's going to hurt our future opportunities to put a technical center in the East Zone because right now, the 38% of the students in Fort Myers Tech, part of them are coming from Glades and Hendrick. But that's another thing. First question was about the now $93 million for Quadruple A, and I did not see in those current expenditures, does that include the steel that we already purchased?
Yes, it does.
Okay. And the second question about Riverdale, and this is actually, Dr. Savage, maybe an academic question. How has the opening of Gateway affected the numbers at Riverdale and the attendance and capacity and all that? How has that shifted? Because I know there was a concern of a lot of flight because of a brand-new school and something bright and shiny. And the third thing I want to mention again is that we are still not addressing the fact that we have not gone to the true community in any viable way to discuss VPAA and Lambs, and especially what is going to happen there. And every time I mention it, we're just still going ahead with the plan that it will be a multi-school. And I just would really like to see having the community truly involved in a couple of events or surveys or whatever it is, to see is that what we really are looking at. The last thing I'm going to say is, my concern about bringing all areas of the county resources equitably up to where everyone else is, is just what Mr. Rickenbacker is saying. We are looking at a 14% inflation rate. So when we do get ready to build in, for example, the East Zone, the costs are going to be up. We may end up where we were just before the half-cent sales tax, so we don't have the money to build the schools. Just a thought. Thank you.
Okay, so Dr. Savage, do you have an answer for Mrs. Gittens?
We'll be happy to put all those into the Board Weekly if you'd like, just in terms of the Riverdale implication, the true community involvement, just give staff a chance to respond to those, and then for the entire Board to be able to read those responses.
Okay. Mrs. Jordan, you had?
Yeah, just a couple, please. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Really appreciate it. With the construction for the single-point entry, that is just what we're working on now, because we still have some of the schools that have not, they're not on this list as of yet.
Correct. My department's only 22. Usually, the bigger dollar ones involve multiple trades. You have IT that's doing some work, where it just might be a badge swipe or a door, you have maintenance, maybe just a single door with a frame that isolates that, and then the IT people put the badge in. So there's a lot more than just the 22 that I show. There's probably another 40 other, 50 other projects that those other two divisions are managing and trying to expedite, in fact, track those to be complete too, within a year.
Okay, yeah, because first thing I saw was Fort Myers Middle was not here, and I know that there's a real issue at that school. So thank you for clarifying that. And then piping. When they're doing the piping, have we considered, because of the cost is really, we know it's skyrocketed now, pipelining or other ways of doing the construction?
Correct.
Or different products?
We do pipelining on our storm sewers and water mains that just physically can't be interrupted at this point in time. But this is actually in the food service area where the piping is failing. PVC is still your best bet, cheapest bet. It's gone up, but copper has gone up even more substantially and is more labor-intensive. So everything we do is economy to scale. You know, we try to give you something that, inside the classroom is the best classroom you can have. I prefer not to spend a lot of money on the outside, be frugal and economical, which we do with our air conditioning systems, our insulation systems. And that's been our direction since I've been here since 2004. So, you know, we get some things where the county and areas, they like a little cheesecake on the face of the building to break it up so it doesn't look like a box. I think we've accomplished that. For example, the Village of Astero didn't particularly like our architectural design. They thought it was institutional. Well, last time I checked, schools are institutional. But, you know, I try to emphasize that we're not building a beautiful Princeton campus with brick and eaves, and, you know, we're here to educate kids and best utilize that funding, and I think we accomplished that.
Okay, thank you. And then my last thing is, I was always excited when I see Franklin Park on here, and the fact that we would be moving it to Marsh Avenue across from the other school, that would then take it, Dr. Savage, take it into a different zone. So I guess when we do the workshop, we'll figure how that's all going to work with the busing, because that is a different, that street itself is a different zone for the schools.
Yes. I don't believe that it's actually been decided yet. It's just one of the opportunities, just because of the current, as Mr. Rickenbacker said, the plumbing, the site.
Everything's there.
It's all available permitting. All the things that we already would need to have in place would certainly be a logical opportunity, but we have to look at all those pieces well, and that would certainly be part of the workshop material, so.
Well, our biggest problem with that is because we, if we were even lease a property, and there were properties in and about Franklin Parks that we looked at, I now have to go to the county. I have to do an LDO. Potentially, all that time, creating those access points and the utilities that get to that site, could push that school out another year or two.
No, yeah, we don't want to do that.
Exactly. So from a perspective of being relatively close to the old campus, food service, meaning the kitchen at James Stevens.
Yeah, everything is there, correct.
I would think that that would be your best bet.
I'm with you there. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mrs. Patrica?
So two quick ones. The first is, as you talked about the renovations at Riverdale today, and I envision their gymnasium workout area, I think there's like a special weight room for the wrestlers? Do you know what I'm talking?
Yeah, this is, this is separate from the wrestling building that they have out there.
So that's not going to be touched?
This is, this is their existing locker and gymnasium, which was underside. I believe they only had bleachers on one side. This is getting rid of that because the locker rooms are shot, the gym is undersized, can't support real, true games. And, but similar to what we did at Dunbar High, we took a building that was approved to be demolished by Castaldi, but we left it, and Mr. Burnside turned it into a multipurpose room where he does all his SAT testing and the testing and so forth, and he actually utilized it with COVID because he pulled the kids from the larger cafeteria into there for that separation. So it's not just a secondary gym. They use it as a multipurpose space.
Okay, and then my next comment, I think, is for Dr. Savage. So as much as I hate to bring this up, Bonita Springs High School. I remember looking at the per-student station cost to build that school and comparing it to the per-student station cost of other high schools across the state. And that really was, was very convincing and really illustrated to me the gross underestimation of the initial cost to build. I'm not saying there was a gross underestimation here. I understand the process of coming together and inflation and all of that. What I'm wondering, Dr. Savage, is whether, when you come in front of the Board to brief us on that GMP, could you try to find similar costs across the state? With the understanding that other districts, as Ms. Morgan said, are building right now, so what is their GMP per-student station cost?
Yeah, I am happy to get with Mr. Rickenbacker offline and kind of reach out to other districts that are experiencing some level of growth or construction that would have similar markets to us. And so I think there's an opportunity for us to bring at least some data and some information to help frame for the Board.
Great.
And then we're happy to do that.
Thank you.
Correct. I can just share with you that my original budget estimate a year ago was $84 million without inflation. So if you tack about 14% on, that'll tell you where we're at today.
Okay, anybody else? We're going to have to limit, because we're way. Could you please, Ms. Gittens, just email it to Mr. Rickenbacker?
I have just a quick question, please.
Is it really quick?
Well, by the time you keep asking me, I could have asked.
Yeah, why don't you email it to him? Because we are timing this. We are way over. Okay, Mr. Rickenbacker, did you have anything more?
Thank you.
Okay, and then, okay, so then we are ready for the next presentation, which is, this is our main large presentation for today, which is redistricting overview. And this is our second, oops. I am so sorry. That is my, I'm actually timing. My timer going off. So if they will please get set up, and we have a lot yet after this on our agenda, and we're running about 25 or so minutes behind, so.
Madam Vice Chair, just, I'm trying to sort out what I'm observing over on the other side here. So I think maintenance, just because Ms. Sedano is here, was the second half of that capital project update, I think Mr. Rickenbacker left off on the maintenance slide.
Oh, okay.
So I think.
I was just going to say that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I was one, I thought he was going to present on that, because that's the way it read on my script here. So I apologize, map redistricting people. We can go ahead and finish the other presentation, the other part.
Good afternoon, board members, Dr. Savage and fellow colleagues. With me, Mr. Jimmy Thompson, and myself, Barbara Sedano from Maintenance Services. We're both the administrators for the department. We'll try to make this quick. I understand your, the time is kind of short today.
No, no, go ahead. I'm going on the written script, and I'm sorry, your name wasn't on the script that I have, but no, by all means, we need to hear from you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so some of it is just a All right, so some of it is just a, is a refresh of where we left off with some of the other projects that were mentioned at the previous presentation. The first slide that we have here is for Cape Coral High School. It's a sewer reclaimed water connection project that we're, that's taking place. Concurrently, a site service being performed in order to finalize the asphalt drawings that are needed, in order to submit a set of drawings to the city of Cape Coral for permitting. Our drawing process, finalization of that, we're thinking it's going to take about eight weeks. Construction part of it will take also about another eight weeks. This work is actually going to involve disconnecting and removing existing drain fields and subject tanks and connection to city sewer and reclaimed water for sports field. This new system will serve as the new primary irrigation system for the campus. Challenger Middle School is our next project. And this is also one of the refreshes. It's an update from the previous meeting, and it is for gutter upgrades at this location. Concurrently, we are waiting on materials. Once we receive the materials, a contractor will be able to commence the fabrication that is necessary for the gutters and the downspouts. Afterwards, we're going to be scheduling a pre-construction meeting. This project is for the whole campus, and we're, the total linear footage for this project is going to be approximately 1,214 linear feet of gutters that we're anticipating on installing. A lot of the ghosts, I'm sorry, a lot of the downspouts that are there are in good condition, so we will not have to replace those areas, so we will be reutilizing those that's at the site. Next project, as well as also a gutter project, we're actually ahead of schedule on this one. When we submitted our PowerPoint, we, we have a date of 10/18 as the project start date, but actually, we have already completed this project, so my apologies for the incorrect date on the slide. This project entailed 752 linear feet of gutters, as well as 488 linear feet of downspouts that needed to be installed. Additionally, with the installation of the downspout, some of the things that we're, we're migrating to is to actually, when we do the downspout design, we're cutting into the concrete sidewalks in order to install a corrugated drainage pipe, in order to get the water away from the campus and away from those areas to avoid erosion in those, in those green grass areas at the campus. The next slide is for Hancock Creek Elementary School, as well, this is a gutters upgrade project. This project actually entails about 1,023 linear feet of gutter space, oh, linear feet of gutters that is going to be installed. This would also include installation of downspouts, as well as some concrete work that will be needed in order to accommodate the drainage pipes that are necessary to avoid erosion at this location. Concurrently, we're waiting for materials. We have slightly revised our start dates. Our underground drainage work would actually commence on 11/5. Thereafter, we're going to, it's going to take about eight weeks to perform this project, and one of the things that's going to be unique about this project is that we're going to have to do the work after hours from about 5:00 PM to 2:00 AM in order to accommodate the school functions and school events that are taking place. This project taking place at this time will not interrupt the school operations. Next campus where we're performing gutter upgrades is Lexington Middle School. Pre-construction meeting will take place tomorrow at 9:30 AM. Pretty much during our construction, pre-construction meetings, we're going over work hours, project layouts, operations at the schools, what's taking place, so that we can work around those schedules. This location is a larger project. We're anticipating about 2,458 linear feet of gutters to be installed and approximately 1,680 linear feet of downspout to be installed. The existing gutters were made of steel, have been impacted by environmental conditions, as well as sediment that's set at the bottom of the gutters, so the new materials that's being utilized is aluminum, that's more suitable for this region. Our next project is Littleton Elementary School. This is also a gutters upgrades project. This is for the entire campus. This project is actually going to entail about 1,123 linear feet of aluminum gutters, as well as the concrete work that's going to be needed for the corrugated pipes for drainage. Work as well will also be performed after 5:00 PM in order to not interfere with the school schedules. Underground work is going to be commencing November 18 through December 7 afterwards. They're going to be doing the upper work, which is more of the gutter and downspout sections of the project. Part of the problem here as well, similar to other campuses, is erosion of the sidewalk surfaces that was taking place, as well as we had algae buildup on the sidewalks that made it unsafe for walking conditions. Our next project is Pelican Elementary School. It's a playground equipment installation. We actually had to demo the existing playground, and this involved installation of a new system for the, for the students. Some of the issues that we experienced there were rusty surfaces on the platform, as well as the verbit coating on some of the surfaces were also deteriorated and in very poor condition. For the most part, this project is almost complete. We still have to perform a final walkthrough and close out this project. Our next project is the Tanglewood Elementary School PE Pavilion. Our drawings are about 97% complete. The next step of this project will be to provide the drawings to the contractor in order to obtain a proposal, to obtain the physical work. This model of this pavilion is actually going to be about 56 by 60 in size. It will mimic the same designs that are currently being used by the construction services team. Associated with this project, we're also going to include a bathroom and storage building for the, for the pavilion, and pretty much it will be one male, one female, one storage area, as well as one PE office for that location. Our next one is the Three Oaks Elementary School. This is actually a gym roof renovation project. We're still in the earlier stages of this project. Right now, we're still working on finalizing some of the work authorizations and in order to obtain the proper proposal from the general contractor. The next slide is for Tyse Elementary School. This project is on hold until summer. We had to push this project out because of the time that it's going to, that's needed to, in order to perform this work. And this work is actually going to require about four weeks for completion. Basically, with this system, we're converting a two piston system elevator to a one piston system. Some of the problems that we were experiencing there is that there was a misalignment of the pistons, so as the elevator is trying to, to operate, it's not syncing with each other, so that was causing us a problem. So therefore, we're going to be converting that two-system approach to a one-piston Trafalgar Middle School, this is another gutters project. Same similar situation is happening at the other campuses. Problems with sidewalk, water falling on the sidewalks, creating erosion there. This work will also include downspouts and gutters installation, and new drainage to carry away the water from the buildings. Concurrently, we're waiting on materials. Thereafter, fabrication would take place of those materials in order for, to prepare Our last slide for this afternoon will be for Varsity Lakes Middle School Lee High Senior. It's actually a traffic improvement project. This is actually a three-phase project that we're working on. Phase one involved the concrete barriers on the most southern side of the Varsity Lakes Middle School entrance. This part has already been completed. The second phase that we're working on is the design work for the new pedestrian walkways and the new roadway for the buses. The phase two design options, what we have remaining are the, we have like two different options of how the roadway would actually be laid out. So between safety, safety department and planning department, as well as maintenance, we're working collaboratively in order to arrive at the best solution for those roadways. And last, the third phase of that project will pretty much be construction, just to make, you know, get everything done that was part of the designs. All right, thank you very much.
Okay, everybody have any questions for Ms. Fisher?
Thank you. I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I just commented to Superintendent Savage that I had visited maintenance, and I'm really quite amazed at the work that's going on there, so I want to thank you guys for your diligence and for such a detailed presentation and explanation of the project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, and I was just going to say, you make gutter upgrades and roof replacements sound about as exciting and fun as they can sound.
Thank you.
Really, the comprehensive updates are essential for us, so we really appreciate it.
Thank you. My pleasure.
Anybody else with question or comment?
Comment as well. Just thank you so much for this. This is great information, and I don't recall ever receiving it like this and the depth that it is. I see that we're waiting on a lot of materials. I think they're over, out in the ocean floating around probably, but I know they'll get here someday. So much.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a great afternoon, everyone.
Okay, and we have four people here that are presenting, all the same as I have on my list. Mr. Jared Eady, who is the Director of Diversity and Inclusion. Ms. Kathy Eba, who is the Director of Planning, Growth, and Capacity. Dr. Denise Carlin, who is Chief of Staff. Go ahead and introduce yourself, I'm sorry.
And David Cates with Davis Demographics.
Oh, thank you. I didn't, didn't recognize you, and I knew you weren't Kathy. And also our attorney, our board attorney, Kathy DePree Bruno.
Thank you very much. And good afternoon, board members, Dr. Savage and Attorney DePree Bruno. It's nice to be with you today for our second conversation relative to redistricting. We're going to go ahead and jump right into our agenda, because you can see that it is very full. We have 90 minutes with you today, and I think we will use every bit of it. So we are going to start this afternoon by just a quick review. All good teachers always go back and review, so we'll do that for the first moment or so with Mr. Eady, Ms. Eba, and Mr. Cates. We will move on to some legal advice from Attorney DePree Bruno. There were a couple of questions asked last time, and so we want to make sure we pick those up for you. We were expecting, we're hoping that we were able to have the county with us today. Their meeting ran pretty late, and so they were not able to join us, but Ms. Eba and Mr. Cates will jump in and present map 6A and 6B. We will talk with you a little bit about school district comparisons. We took a little spin, looked at large districts, as well as some of our similar districts in terms of a hybrid model of at-large and single-member districts, and so we did some homework on that for you. We'll show you some of that data as well. We're going to talk with you about some of our considerations and, and really walk through each of the maps and look at some strengths and opportunities within those maps, and we'll have you have a conversation. You do have a handout that was provided to you that talks about redistricting criteria, so as we go through the strengths and opportunities, we'll ask you to use that as your lens when you're identifying the strengths and opportunities for the maps. We will talk with you about a little revision to our timeline based on some of the information that has come forward and some of the proposals that we have for you today. And then, any comments and questions, and we'll wrap up our 90 minutes together. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Eady, who's going to walk us through a part of our review, followed by Ms. Eba.
Good afternoon, board members, Dr. Savage, Attorney Bruno. Just to wrap up our conversation that we had a few weeks ago, an important notation for our redistricting process lets us know that in varying stages, the board has taken the direction of adopting the maps proposed by the county and then providing similar provisions for county staff to provide alternatives, from a school district level, I should say, alternatives for their consideration. We're now in the process of looking at redistricting numbers, thanks to the 2020 census, and the 2020 census conversation of which Attorney Bruno will talk about a little bit further, lets us know that the board has a prerogative to redraw residents' area boundaries and years that are odd number of years. An important consideration also is that no one of our district or as for our work here, board member residence area may be more substantially than the others, and our optimum number is around 152,000 constituents for your district, or, once again, for our conversation, your residence areas. So to go a little bit further, Ms. Eba is going to review some of the demographic information that we discussed in our previous conversation.
Good afternoon, once again. So David, please jump in as.
All right. This is what we presented to you a couple of weeks ago. We'll quickly just go through this information. The slide you see here with the map on the front was provided initially by the county with the numbers. This is essentially your current boundaries with the 2010 and now the 2020 census. You can see the differences. You were in compliance as of the 2010 census, and you're out, it's out of whack, if you will, looking at the new 2020. These are the numbers here you see on the screen, a reference to your current boundaries, and the variance, or how far you off of, around the target, which I think was 152,000, would be the average, dividing your total population by five. And you can see what the arrows are pointing, those are the ones that are quite a bit over or under, so that essentially initiates the process of you having to look at new boundaries. If these were all very low, like 1% or less, then your boundaries would more or less be in compliance, and you can maintain your same boundaries. Because of your population growth, you do need to make some changes. And then this also is a slide put together by the county. It's hard for me to read all the numbers up there, but essentially, it shows you your population differences between the two decades and the change in your, the racial and ethnic breakdowns of your county over the last 10 years. Just this is, and just I want to emphasize, I know this might be mentioned later on, whoever does do this work, whether it's the county, consultant or whatnot, we're required to have to look at population, and then once we look at balancing those, then we can look at the racial, ethnic breakdowns, but these are not used for the actual creation of the boundaries, they're more supplemental information.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. So the first question that was asked is, what standards must a redistricting process apply? And the most important thing, and it really does kind of go back to what we were just talking about, it's the equal population. That's the first thing, and that is the mandatory legal requirement, is to make sure that we, the districts are as equally populated as possible. The other thing that we need to consider is what we call diluting the vote, and there's two particular ways that that happens. One is packing, and one is cracking. So cracking is when you split a minority community, and then packing is when you have a minority community, but you add additional votes to try to dilute the strength of that vote. So a lot of times, the litigation that we see is based on the packing and the cracking. Make sure that the boundaries are contiguous and that we follow the 14th Amendment due process, as well as the second, the Voters' Rights Act, second section. And this is where it also gets very, very complicated, because this is that delicate stance, the balance that we were talking about before. Race can be used as a, as something that you look into, that you consider, but it cannot be the only factor that you consider when you're looking at your redistricting. And the reason is because of the 14th Amendment that says that you cannot discriminate based on race. And then, of course, your Voting Rights Act says that based on the history, and this is why the Voting Rights Act came into being, you can't try to dilute the vote or prevent minorities from being able to vote with what they used to do with the polling taxes and things of that nature. So that's, that's pretty much the gist of what the redistricting process is. Next slide?
This is?
This is the next slide? Oh, all right, so additional factors that we need to consider. So one thing is Oh, all right. So, additional factors that we need to consider. So, one thing is to be as compact as possible when you're trying to get your districts together. And the other is, we have to be careful with what they call gerrymandering, which is when you're carving out these weird types of districts for a particular purpose, and a lot of times, it's to dilute the vote. So, you want to follow as much of the natural boundaries as possible. That's one of the defenses, and preserve as much of the existing boundaries that you possibly can, as well as trying to avoid splitting communities of interest. A lot of times, you have a community, minority community, that have same interests, same desires, and you want to try to keep them as much as possible. Again, and this kind of goes back again to the cracking and the packing that we were talking about. I talked already a little bit about the Voting Rights Act. Another question that was posed was, can we follow the county's maps? Absolutely, you can follow the county's map. If the county's maps are legally sufficient, and the Board feels that this is in their best interest and that this is how you want to design your districts, you're absolutely able to follow those maps or create your own maps or keep your current map. But you'll have to make sure that you have that balance if you're going to do that.
So, just a quick update as to where the Board is with, in relationship to the county's activities. They, following their October 5 public hearing, they agreed to development of a Map 6, which they actually end up creating a 6A and a 6B, which we will go over in just a second. Then, today, they had another hearing where they reviewed Map 6 and 6B. They also had a number of constituents speak about the process and with the direction and propose different comments, including a map that was presented to, presented by the NAACP. It wasn't necessarily went in in detail, but there was, it was discussed by the constituents. And then, and then there, at today's hearing, there was also a map presented by Commissioner Hammond, which he and his staff developed. We have, we are aware of both of these maps, but we have yet to have a chance to really evaluate the maps, and so we won't be presenting or discussing them today. It is our goal to get the maps, to be able to evaluate them. We understand that the county has Commissioner Hammond's map and is going to be assessing the demographics, assessing the capacity and all of the other information about that in preparation for their next meeting, which is November 2. As a result of today's meeting, they agreed to evaluate Maps 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, the NAACP map, and Commissioner Hammond's map. They are not going to continue to consider Map 6 and 6B, which we'll be discussing in just a second. And then, after the November 2 meeting, at the November 16 hearing, they intend to select their new jurisdictional boundaries. Was there a question? Do you want to entertain questions now, or do you want us to finish?
Let's finish first. Thank you.
So, Map 6A is this one, and then, Map 6B is this one. The difference between the two maps is if you look at the boundary between District 3 and District 2, it carves the district just a little bit differently. District 2 comes all the way down in Map B, and you get a little bit more of the Iona McGregor in Map A. The goal, as we understand it of this 6 map, was they were trying to see if there was a way that they could combine the city of Fort Myers and the community of Lehigh Acres in one jurisdictional boundary area. But the population of Fort Myers and Lehigh is too big to have it be in one jurisdictional area, and therefore, you can see in both of these 6A and 6B options, the south, the southeast corner of Lehigh ends up going into a different district. So, it does, in order to do this, they're able to keep, you know, a lot of the population together of the communities of Lehigh and Fort Myers, but they do have to take the community that is in the southeast corner of Lehigh and merge it into District 2. One of the things that you asked of us at our last meeting was to, was a question about how does our process similar or differ from other school districts? So, we looked at a number of school districts, both in terms of size, in terms of its proximity to us, and in terms of the kind of jurisdictional makeup it has in relationship to the counties. And here are the responses to this. I'm not gonna go through each one of these. They were presented to you in your packet, but one of, a couple of the significant things I wanted to point out is Hillsborough is actually waiting until 2023. By statute, we can only do redistricting in odd years. So, because we got our census data so late this year, that means we have till December 31, just over two months from now, to complete this effort. Doesn't give us a lot of time. Hillsborough is the one jurisdiction that we talked to that decided that because they have so little time, they are actually gonna wait until '23. They're gonna use '22 as their, typically, you have nine months or so to do the evaluation when you get the census data in the springtime. So, they're gonna use '22 as their evaluation year, and then, they will adopt their new districts in the 20, in '23. You can see that in terms of school districts and whether or not they share or are different from the counties, it's kind of, it's pretty split. There, it's kind of a 50/50. There are 50% of them who are similar to us, where they have single, same will member and at-large. There are some that have just single members, and there are some that have just at-large. But it's definitely across the board, and it doesn't really follow, you know, we've looked, we tried to look at patterns, if it's larger districts or if it's smaller districts, if it's more urban districts or more suburban or rural districts. There really isn't a trend as to why different districts decide to do things either same or, same or different or the type of jurisdictions that they have. It really is a local determination that each district decides. They also, some of them have been the same as their county, but either in the, in the recent changes or in this one, they're looking to go in a different direction. But it, it really is a local determination.
So, if I could just add to that, Kathy, some of them actually have court orders that date back a long time ago that they have to basically redistrict at certain times, like Miami-Dade, for example. They have a very specific court order from 1994 that requires them to do certain actions and take certain steps. So, that could be why we have some of the differences from the districts.
And so, this is the ones that are under 600,000, but many of these are close to us. So, you, if there are any specific questions about this, we're happy to take it, but we just, we, we tried our best to get as, as good a sampling as we could from jurisdictions across the state.
Okay. Any specific questions about this segment? Anybody? Okay, Mrs. Gittens?
Well, I do think, I was at the meeting this morning, and I believe they're going to be putting up Commissioner Hammond's map on their website this afternoon, is what they informed me, and I think it's worth the Board at least taking a look at. It, he did include quite a few of the things that we mentioned and make sure that they were in place. So, I would just suggest that you do take a look at that. I'm not sure where we are on this today. Are we supposed to be leaving here? I see as we go further down, there's comments about each of the maps. Is it the goal of the Board today to leave here, having selected one way or the other, or a map or another? Or what is our goal?
No, what, so, this was just the information part of the presentation. The next section is that Dr. Carlin is going to lead, and I will be capturing your notes. You'll be able to see your comments on the screen as you're making them. We're going to lead you in a discussion. We have three options for you. One, moving forward, there's three options. You can either adopt what the county adopts. You can utilize one of the county's map, but adopt something that's different, or you can create your own. What we want to do today is Dr. Carlin is going to lead in a discussion, and we're gonna start with Map 1, and we're gonna go through Map 6B. We're not going to do the NAACP map or Commissioner Hammond's map because we just received those, and we don't have enough information to present to you at this time. But we would like to have a discussion about the strengths and weaknesses of each of these maps, just so that we can start learning what it is that you think about these maps. This isn't, we're not making a determination today. We're not making any final decisions today. We just want to have a discussion about where you think about the maps that have been presented to date are. So, at that, Dr. Carlin, if, I'm gonna turn it over for you, and then, I'll capture your comment, the comments.
May I finish my comment? Please. Now, I understand what we're going to do. What I am not so much asking you, as the Board, when we leave here, what is our timeline? You're saying it has to be in odd years, which gives us to the end of this year. The county commission is doing theirs on the 16th. How quickly or do we have a deadline? Do we have a timeline? Are we going to decide to do it in '21 or wait till 2000, you know, or '23? That's what I'm asking, is do we have a timeline now to look at all of this and to make some decision before the end of this year or put it off?
And if I may, I can add to some, provide you with some information where we're headed. So, we skipped to the end of our presentation just to give you a feel. So, if we do go with the county, one of their maps, their map, you know, however we choose, if it's aligned with the county, then we will continue to stay on track, as we shared with you, with the exception of a November 3 board briefing, which we are going to request as a special briefing, and here's why. We did receive a request, as I hinted to you last week, from the NAACP. On November 2, they would like to come and present, and because they are within the timeframe as specified by Board policy, we are allowing for that to occur. We have had some rumblings of some other groups that may want to come and present, and so we are going to certainly allow them the opportunity to submit a proposal. So, with that caveat in mind, we would be on track, you know, to continue. If we go with the county, on November 16, we'd come back. What do you think? You know, let's, let's get some consensus around one of the maps, and then, we would move forward with December 7 toward adoption. If there is a desire to go with another map, let's say there's, you know, the NAACP map, another map that maybe that Davis constructs for you, then that will push our timeline back. We do feel confident we can have that done by the end of the year. So, what that timeline would look like is, again, November 2, we would have our community group presentations. On the 3, again, a special briefing so that we could go back and look through, you know, any of those maps we weren't able to pick up, to analyze NAACP map, to analyze Commissioner Hammond's map, and any other map that you might want to consider at that point, if there's other community groups that have come forward. November 30, or excuse me, November 16, we would come back and we would say, okay, anything additional? And then, November 30 is when Davis had said, if you do go with your own map, he does need the time between November 3 and November 30 to put that map together. So, let's say you say, I don't like any of the options. We're gonna go with something different. He does need some lead time to be able to do that. So, we would land here in a special briefing on November 30, where he would unveil that based on your direction on the 16. And then, that still puts us into, unfortunately, it would be a special meeting, but fortunately, we have the time. December 14, we would recommend coming back for the final public hearing and then a special meeting at that time, and that would be to adopt the map that you all have created via Davis. So, just to go to Mrs. Gittens' question, you know, we do have a way forward for you, but again, I'll throw it back to you for discussion with Mrs. Gittens' question. Are we doing it now or, you know, waiting till 2023?
Well, it basically is on your one slide, where you're saying we have three options, but those three options cannot be fulfilled today because we don't have all the information.
That's correct, and we are really not looking to you today to make a decision. Today's, really, our focus is to analyze each of the maps that we currently have and the maps that we had prior to noon today. And then, we will certainly, we can come back, like I suggested on November 3, and have another analysis of any additional maps that have come forward. So, that's just our proposal, but we turn it over to you for that discussion.
Okay. Does anybody else have a question before Dr. Carlin moves on? Yes, Ms. Petrika?
So, Attorney DePree Bruno, on Slide 10, if I can go back to it and figure out what my question was.
Which slide is that?
Slide 10, please.
They're not numbered.
What's the title?
What traditional factors may a redistricting process apply?
Thank you.
Compact and significant natural.
A valid underlining public policy purpose. Does that include increasing minority representation on, is that considered a valid?
Yes.
Underlying public, okay.
Because a legal test is compelling state interest, so that would be part of that compelling state interest, to increase the strength of the minority vote and that community interest.
Okay, and then, gerrymandering?
Yes.
Is that, can that be viewed in two ways? Is it gerrymandering only when we draw lines to dilute minority vote, or is it gerrymandering if we draw lines to increase minority vote?
It can be challenged both ways.
Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else before we continue? All right, Dr. Carlin?
All right, let's take a deep dive then.
Move ahead.
All right, terrific. So, as I mentioned before, you do have redistricting criteria, just for ease, in a hard copy beside you. And basically, what we did was we took Mrs. DePree Bruno's slides and reduced those into a one-page worksheet. So, as we go through each of the maps, Ms. Eba is going to scribe. We'll have strengths and challenges. So, we would ask at this time that you pull up Map 1, and again, using the redistricting criteria as the basis for your strength or opportunity, we would ask for your, your input.
Okay, Mrs. Gittens?
The first one, the, the main thing that I see on that is that it does split up Fort Myers and portions, I believe, of the Fort Myers and Dunbar area into three different zones and districts.
So, that's a challenge.
Is there any way that, I have to, I'm a visual, and I know where everything is if I see streets. Is there a way that we can pull this up on our own to see what streets these are? Because I know what Ms. Gittens just said, which, when I'm looking at this, it would only divide it into that particular area into two, but if I don't see the street names, it's really hard for me to, is there a way that I can, that I can pull that up? I mean, without looking at this map, pull up my own maps?
Is there a way to zoom in? I know you're showing that slide there to zoom in for them.
Did I have like a GIS or?
The county maps. Try it on the website.
Just for them, just?
I don't think I can. Well, I can, yeah.
On League Gov.
I can't.
Yeah, if you could, might be able to zoom in if you're looking on your own. If it's in PDF form, you should be able to zoom in, and the names should pop up better.
Yeah, even when I zoomed it in as far as it could go, I still don't see streets, and I'm a street person. I'm not a street person.
So, they're?
On the League Gov maps online, it may show it more clearly, if you want to check that.
Oh.
I'm sorry, I should have asked this question before.
I mean, I could hand it to her. Am I allowed to? I, I, I happen to have a copy of the report that the county put out about a month ago. It's hard to kind of even see the, the names are on there. It's a hard copy. I could hand it to you, and you could see if that'll help you. Is that okay?
You don't mind? Thank you.
And while Mrs. Jordan is looking, is there any other strength or opportunity for Map 1? Anything else that you see that is a strength or any concerns that you have necessarily about this map?
Okay, Ms. Gittens?
The other concern, I believe one of the criteria was compact boundaries and, and something to do with community or whatever, and that District 5 is an absolutely huge area. On the south side of Lehigh, that other additional yellow includes a very large area, Corkscrew Road down to the county line. There's immense amount of housing and development down there that is different demographically. down there that is different demographically from Lehigh and Buckingham and Elva. So it's, if we're talking about like groups, it's not. And so anyway, I just think it's pretty large, and it does not have the same focus.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Gittens.
Anybody else?
Ms. Vaughn, if I may, a vice chair.
Yes.
It's Mr. Savage over here. Just, just so there's an awareness, Ms. Jordan asked about whether or not there are any maps where you can actually zoom in and see the street names and whatnot. So on the leegov.com website, under the redistricting portal that they have, just going down a ways, you'll find one of the links is an interactive map, and it has all the commissioned district alternatives with the census blocks. When you click on that particular link, it allows you to zoom in all the way in. You can see individual street names. It has different overlays, similar to what we've done with proximity plan, creating a GIS map that Davis Demographics did for our work. This has those various different overlays, and it gives you a chance to kind of explore beyond what we're able to hear to do today. It's also something that the public at home who has any particular interest, very easy to navigate, very intuitive. So it's on that Leegov website, and it does, it's an ArcGIS map.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we are looking for any other strengths?
Thank you.
Or challenges? And if you'll let us know which it is, if it's a strength or a challenge.
Which one are we on?
Map one.
Still on the first.
Still on the first map.
Well, I mean.
Go ahead.
District one is huge, too. It's not just District 5, that's not compact. District one is massive. I think about the person working out there trying to cover that whole area. That's tough.
But remember, you're looking at the equal population, too.
Understood. And that's the plus. The plus is it's pretty close to equal population.
If you might, I'd like to make one little comment about that compactness issue, just to make it clear. In fact, if you read the, the report of the, from the county, they do a paragraph on what compactness is and how they, they analyze it. It's not so much the size, the sheer size of it, it's more, imagine drawing a circle around a zone, and if, the idea is that compact, it could be very large, but still could be kind of drawn a circle around it. The idea is areas that are very lengthy, I don't know how to describe it, north, south, east, west, those are not circle-shaped, they're less compact. So I don't want you to get confused that it's very large. It could still be compact and be large, because that is, could be a very, not very populated areas of a district, could be large. So compactness, the idea was not to make sure you have very thin, long boundary lines. That's the, the concept behind the compactness.
Okay, I believe Ms. Fisher had a comment or question?
No, he took care of it. Thank you.
Oh, I thought you did. Sorry. Anybody else? Okay, can we move on to the next?
Okay, let's move on to map two then. So we're going to move on to the next slide that shows us map two, alternative two, and we will go ahead and let's, this time, let's start with strengths. If there are strengths of this map that you see, let's go ahead and start with just strengths.
Okay, who wants to begin? Okay, Ms. Fisher?
Yeah, I just have a question, Dr. Carlin. So as we're looking at these maps, and we have the redistricting criteria in front of us, it might be helpful if we kind of go through and you give us an example of what you mean by strengths and challenges, because if we're looking at, you know, the population is the big thing, and that's, was determined by the census. So now we have a variety of differences in each zone. I know, like, I'm District one, and it's a huge area, but a lot of it is water and islands. So the population is more concentrated, and you know, I might say, well, the Cape, as you know it, and where the population is, has been divided, you know what I'm saying? So I think we have to keep our minds open that this is a global thing, and that each voting district in each area is unique. And so I, I think if we had an example of what you're looking for in terms of strength and challenges, that might be a little bit helpful.
Yes, so that, that's a great question. So a couple of things we've heard, just listening to the county commission meetings and talking with some of our, you know, our constituents, our colleagues, would be things like the city of Fort Myers, for example. If you look at District 4, there has been a significant amount of community conversation around, should the city of Fort Myers stay intact, or should it be, should it move to an adjacent district? And so that would be an example perhaps of either, depending on how you view that, a strength or a challenge. You know, if I, if I feel like the city should move and go with another adjacent district, then I might see that particular area as a, as a challenge. If I believe that it is where it should be, then that would be, could be perceived as a strength.
So then, that being said, I would ask, then, when we look at that, the city of Fort Myers has a very condensed population, and it has a high minority population. So I think we have to be really careful about the cracking and, and packing. So I don't know if anyone has any comments regarding that. I mean, because that is an issue, and always has been, you know, is that, that particular location has always been a little bit divided, you know, when, even when we were back to busing and busing kids to other areas. So I think if that's what we're trying to avoid, is cracking, then what's the response to that? And I don't know if Davis Demographics has some insight into that kind of a thing.
Well, referring back to that document that the county published about a month ago, in that document, they actually have the breakdown of the race and ethnicity. So all the information for all these first five scenarios are in there. So your answers to your, it's really, to be really honest, it's really simple. First and foremost, it's to divide these equally in terms of population. And once that's done, and it was done already at least seven times by the county, the next, once you do that, is then you could unveil the racial, ethnic information. And I know, at least in that first report, they did it for the first five. So all those answers, that's really all you could really provide, one of those two, and then it's up to you to determine physically where the lines are drawn, do you like it or not, but at least you know that these have all been vetted through their legal counsel. They would not be produced for the county commissioners to vote on unless their legal counsel has approved this. So whether you like it or not, that's another, that's kind of what this is about, what you like or don't like about the maps. But yes, to answer your other question, the racial and ethnic information is supplemental, and it's there in that report. I don't have it handy. I know I handed my copy of the report to one of your board members, but it is in the, the county report.
Thank you.
Another example I might offer, Ms. Fisher, is I, I looked at the third component of the criteria, boundaries that follow prominent physical features. So there might be a conversation around the rivers, or some of those natural features, like, I like that part, or I don't like that part because it encroaches on the river, takes me over the river, or it keeps it on the one side. So there might be some feeling one way or another from the board on that.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, and I'll get to those. I just wanted to see if we had gotten information from the city of Cape Coral or the city of Fort Myers.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, my comment had to do with they just said.
Well, I'm asking for some information, and we'll get back to you in just a minute, Ms. Gittens.
So it is our understanding that they are still undergoing their work in that regard, but we, we will, you know, once, once they're to the point where they are feeling comfortable, like we have made some decisions, or at least we've got some consensus, we will continue to follow up with them. Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mrs. Patrica?
So you asked for positives, right?
Yes, please.
So as I look at the list, it appears to stay close to the core existing boundaries, and it appears to, and I, I don't, I, I don't know this to be fact, you can correct me if I'm wrong, it appears to avoid splitting communities of interest. So of the four on the list, it appears to do those two things.
Thank you very much.
And I can't tell a map, I can't tell a river from a street from a highway on these maps, so I can't, I can't talk to natural boundaries.
Okay, Mrs. Gittens?
Okay, it does separate communities of similar interest, the fact that boundaries that follow permanent physical features. On one side, it does, because it uses 75 and 82, which are major roads, and that part is good. However, crossing the river and having a section of one landmass, being with another landmass on the other side of the river is an issue, and there are not the same concerns or issues, et cetera, on the, that one section of Fort Myers that's with Cape Coral.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Jordan, is your hand up?
It was, but I just, I can't, I guess I'm blind, I just can't see what I'm looking at. Because I, at first, it looked like Fort Myers was separated by, I guess that's 41 that I'm looking at, which I, at first, I didn't realize that it was. I see where the bridge is at, but I was thinking it was separating, it does separate part of Fort Myers, because it doesn't go across, I guess, 41. So it's just the east side of 41, it looks like. So I guess this is kind of where we're at right now, similar, except for this is encompassing Tice now, which it did not before.
Okay, so are you?
I don't know if it's good.
Making a challenge?
I'm speaking, I'm talking out loud. I, I don't even, I can't really answer that right now. I'm just talking out loud, so I apologize.
Okay, is there anybody else that has a challenge or a strength to add for this map? Okay, let's go on to the next one then.
Okay, so now we're looking at map three, and we'll start with any strengths that you see of map three.
Okay. Who wants to begin? Okay, Mrs. Morgan?
So to me, the strength is that Fort Myers is all together, and it also, Lehigh drops down the way Ms. Gittens suggested incorporating that community on the, on the southern edge. Other than that, I, I know so little about some of these areas of the county in a, in a really specific way. I can't comment. So.
Okay, we've got that.
We got that one.
All right, any other strengths?
Mrs. Gittens?
Or challenges? We'll take both.
Okay, I think the strength is that it does keep Fort Myers and all of that area together. The, for the most part, District 5 is, is together. A weakness to me is how far over, it goes in the north. I know particularly that straight line down there is more than likely Slater Road. That's pretty far over into the Cape area, and this, this may be something for Mr.
That would not be Slater?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, it's not Slater. It's in coast.
Okay, well, it's, Slater was the boundary before, so now it's further west than it was.
That's correct.
I know very distinctly where that is, and having to campaign all up in that area, again, the section on the other side of 75 is my only concern, because the issues, et cetera, et cetera, are different than those on the other side. Otherwise, the two positives are 82 as a boundary, and the fact that all of Fort Myers is in one. I don't see where the cutoff is. I think this may have been one of the ones where, does this cut off Ms., off McGregor? Does this affect you, Ms. Juvenelli?
Challenge is that, that District 1 is, now comes across the river.
Okay.
And that's a challenge, actually, probably more for District 1 than District, it encroaches District 2, which is, but it's the river that, you know, bringing Cape Coral into Fort Myers, that's.
Physical boundary we were talking about.
Don't, please, don't talk over each, each other. So first, Ms. Gittens, had you finished? And then I'll go to Ms. Juvenelli.
She asked me a question.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, I asked that attack.
Okay, other comments, questions? Yes, Ms. Morgan?
I, I'm not sure what has just been said, but I, I would look at the river and the Cape, and the Cape is really changed by this map. It comes across the river on one side, and then it looks like it's cut off.
Yes.
On the northeast edge. So I don't know what Ms. Fisher's reaction to that is.
Well, you have a reaction, Ms. Fisher?
Yeah, the reaction I have, as I look at this one, map number three, and I see that District 4, you know, is now incorporating a lot more the central part of the Cape, which is high population, and, and then it is crossing the river and, and coming into the Cypress area. And I've always had, like, Sanibel and Boca Grande and all that. For a time, there was Fort Myers Beach, and then there wasn't, and, and so now that's incorporated again. I mean, it's a change, but I think if it meets all the, we're not looking at necessarily, I don't know how to say this, but the, the Cape is big, and we have over 200,000 people there now. So the communities and neighborhoods are more neighborhood-oriented, and the communities are more spread. We have the largest, second-largest area landmass in the state of Florida. So I think it would work. I mean, that, that's my reaction.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Gittens.
And this may, may be for Mr. Davis. As I'm looking at this, Mr. Davis, I'm a little confused about the numbers. District 2 is minus 1196 from the goal of, what, 150, 152? Whereas District 4 is actually smaller, but because of the number of people, it's only 832. Is that, that's 832 under the target? I'm confused about the numbers for District 4 and District 5. Am I looking at this wrong? District 5 has 153, which is the most, but it's 1244. I think what's happening, they're not saying plus or minus of the goal. Is that right?
Right, the, the way this was set up by the county, I don't have the exact number, but roughly 152,000 is the target.
Right.
And you're allowed, I think, about a 1% or 2% variance, and that's why you'll see some are a little larger, some a little smaller, but they're still, still within the acceptable variance.
See, what I would like to see is this map taking from, starting in the north, coming down 75, and to see what would the numbers look like if that, if that orange section to the west of 75 was included in the Cape? Because the thing is, we don't know how many people that is. Is there a way to, to do that, to see that?
That's, there's a lot of people in that area. Sorry, Ms. Vaughn.
Yeah, if you went and created your own maps, we could do that. The county might be able to quickly get you that answer. That might be the route I would go first, and ask the county specific parameters or areas, and say, how many live within that area, and they can probably get you that.
Okay. All right, thank you. And, and that, the, where the river is between 4 and 2, that yellow spreads all over, is the, is the yellow on the other side a portion of the north side of the river as well?
I don't think so.
The river is all in the jurisdiction of the Fort Myers, but the boundary line is the land. So the way this map is capturing, the map is capturing jurisdictional lines. So it's capturing the river, which is in the city of Fort Myers, but it stops at the,
At the land.
At the land, which is, so, and the other thing, you were asking about the pluses and minuses. The way the county has set these maps up is that if there is a negative in front of it, that means it's a negative to the front of it, that means it's a negative to the goal of 152. So, for example, in District 2, it's a negative 1196, that means it's 1196 under the goal, where the 1245, which doesn't have a plus or a minus, it is assumed that it's plus because it doesn't have a negative, so that one in District 5 is 1244 over. So if it has a negative, it's under the target. If it has no marking positive or negative, it's assumed positive.
Okay. To me, this one, I mean, you know, I can live with it because of the things I've said previously. If we were to either ask, if the county or if we were to adjust it, there's a few adjustments that I would make, but that's my comment on that one.
Okay, and I do have a comment on this. What bothers me about this map is that three of the districts are, well, one of them's not significantly over, but District 5 and somewhat in District 4, and then you have two districts that, to me, are, and I know they fall within the parameters, but are significantly under, and that's like the whole south half of the county, south of Fort Myers, and I think just that alone, from my point of view, kicks it off balance just, just a little bit. So that would be my, I would say that would be a challenge on that map. Okay, yeah, one more comment, and then we need to move. You have one too?
No, down here.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
The one thing I wanted to say to your comment is, those southern areas, all of that blank space in there is quickly becoming highly populated and will be within the next three to five years. So that yellow portion at the southern part of it and the east, southeast portion of District 3 are quickly becoming some of our most populated areas, and I had brought this question up to one of the county commissioners about growth, and again, just like us with our charter, we can make changes on odd years, and I can see that with the growth that we're seeing in those areas, we're not going to make it to 10 years to the next, to the next census before we would have to look at this again because of the substantial growth, and those numbers that are under will not be under.
Okay, and I just, I want to get a point from our attorney on that. Am I remembering correctly that in terms of these maps, we can only form the maps on what is there right now, not on growth?
Correct, not on projections.
Okay, so, yeah, I mean, we can only guess, I'm guessing that 12 years ago, let's say, the people in Lee County had no idea which corridors were going to take off and go crazy and which, so I'm just making a comment, that was my negative on the way this map is. And Ms. Fisher, and then we're going to move on to the next.
Well, I think Ms. Gittens really took care of it, but my question was going to be to Mr. David about the considered, considered population growth, because, you know, just looking at, if we are only 342 from the target in this map in District 1, I mean, I see enough building happening where it's not going to be a couple of years before we're, again, you know, at the max. So I didn't know, like, how much weight actually was given, because I see it's down on the list, considered population growth for future population equity, and I think that there, you know, there are those projections, but I didn't know what the weight was given in creating these maps, and I didn't know if you had some insight into that.
Well, of course, you know, we didn't, my company, we didn't create these, so I don't want to speak too much for the county, but I do remember, I did listen in on the county's presentation a few weeks ago, and you asked, I think, them that question, and they said they do take into account, they do, because they have the forward thinking of the development, because they're the county. But still, first and foremost, they are looking at balancing. Where there's some wiggle room with the variance, maybe 1% or 1.5, they did say they kind of looked, not every single one, but, you know, you could indirectly leave a little bit of room, but to be honest with you, for the growth that you're going to have, even being down 1,200 in some of those, at some point, you're going to blow right past them. So it's, the projections, you really, you really can't really think about that right now. You really need to focus on keeping with a certain variance, balancing your population now, and like you mentioned before, if you need to make adjustments down the line, you can.
Just to add to that, to clarify and make sure that the board understands, when you are drawing the maps, you are drawing it on the population that exists now, and then, once you have, you know, you have an idea in terms of your population, you can look at other factors. You can, because this is what the county was saying at the last meeting, is that they drew the maps and then took into some consideration in terms of growth, but you can't draw the maps based on growth.
Okay.
Okay.
So are we ready to move on to the next map, please?
All right, so let's take a look at map four. We'll pull that up on the screen for you real quickly, take a look at your monitors, and then we're going to dive into strengths. So strengths for alternative four.
Okay, who wants to begin on this one?
That's right, we'll take either.
Go ahead, Ms. Gittens.
Okay, the challenge is the fact of taking contiguous Fort Myers across the river. To me, that's always a challenge.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Gittens. Any other strengths or opportunities?
Hey, Mrs. Patrica?
They're pretty close to existing boundaries. And I see some natural, or man-made boundaries being respected here, Corkscrew Road, 41 to a certain extent. Again, those are the areas that I travel the most frequently, so.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Patrica. Any other strengths or opportunities?
Other strengths or challenges, Mrs. Gittens?
It's kind of straddled the fence with me, this section on the other side of the river to the west of 75. They have shortened that area, yet it still exists, so plus and minus, however you want to look at it.
Okay. Ms. Jordan?
Well, in North Fort Myers, they only actually took, looks like a block away from what it used to be, and then they extended the Fort Myers into Tice where it was not at before, because it did not reach Moore's shores at all before. It ended at Marsh, so it extended that east side.
Yeah, gotcha. Okay, thank you, Ms. Jordan.
And that's a challenge?
I don't think it's a challenge. You have, the majority of that, you have, this is a mixed community, pretty much in Fort Myers, so you have your Hispanics there, you have African-American, you have Haitian, you have white, so you have, in that area from Fort Myers over to Moore's shores, that's primarily what the area is. But then when you go across the bridge, you have, it's a whole, it's a different world, so you have people of all different age groups, retirees, and it's just, it's a mixed bag there in North Fort Myers.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anybody else on this map? Okay, next map, please.
All right, let's move on to map five.
Can we back up a second? Ms. Jordan, was that a strength or a challenge, that there's a diverse population in District 4?
Well, I'm going to say it's my district, so I really have never seen it be in a challenge of having a diverse community.
We just wanted to make sure we had captured it right.
Okay, thank you. So let's move on to map five. We'll start with strengths and see if we have any challenges as well, if you'll identify those, thank you.
Mrs. Patrica, and then Ms. Gittens.
This one appears to be the most balanced in terms of numbers, so I don't know if that goes to compactness. I don't think I really understand what compactness is. It appears 41 is no longer a boundary, really, that's respected. Corkscrew Road continues to be respected. The existing boundaries are not all that different from this, and those are my comments. Those are all positives, by the way.
Okay, thank you.
I accept the 41 thing.
Go ahead, Ms. Gittens.
Negative, again, Fort Myers is split up and going across the river. Negative, the west side of 75 being included in District 5. That section, it looks like Tice, again, is included in District 5. My suggestion, of course, is natural boundaries, 75 and 82. Positive is that for most of it, 82, the natural boundary is being used.
Just give us a moment to catch up here, and we'll make sure we've captured it all.
That's a challenge?
Yep. So are we categorizing the interstate and some of the big thoroughfares as man-made or natural? Aren't they man-made?
Man-made.
Right here. Okay, I'm not referring to it, so.
Strengths or opportunities for map five?
Okay, anybody else?
Any of the other districts, anything else you see that might be a strength or an opportunity?
Okay, let's go ahead and move to the next one.
Okay, so now we're going to pop over to map 6A. Let's take a look at that in just a moment here, as we catch up with our notes. Hold on just a moment. We'll let you look at it, and then we'll be ready to take your notes. And these, as a reminder, are the two new maps that were promised by the county that we're bringing back to you today, so 6A.
I'm sorry, would you repeat what you just said?
Yes, the two maps that we promised at October 5th that we would bring back, these are the two maps that we talked about. Yes, so 6A and 6B. We thought we would just bring one map six, but now they've been split into 6A, 6B. So let's look at 6A first. Any strengths that you have or challenges, and if you'll identify those, please.
All right, Ms. Gittens?
Splitting up District 5 halfway in the middle of Lehigh and including it with District 2 all the way over to 41 in Gladiolus and down to Corkscrew and Alaco Road in the Nothing alike at all. So I don't believe splitting up that area is a positive.
Thank you very much. Any other strengths or opportunities?
Mrs. Patrica?
Yeah, it's not just District 5, it's really, most of the districts, with the exception of District 3, have significant line changes in this one, and so core existing bound or boundaries are not preserved.
Thank you.
Okay. Other comments?
Any other strengths or opportunities, then before we move on?
Am I missing something? Is there a reason the numbers are not on this, this one?
Yeah, that's true.
Plus or minus?
The next one as well.
Can I make a comment on that? Yeah, hang on, but, yeah.
So those were the maps that were provided, so we will go back and take a look at that.
Okay, so on these, what we're looking at, we don't know. Do you have an answer for that?
Yes, I do. At the meeting with the county commissioners, they mentioned that as well.
Okay.
And said that they did not have all of the data at that time, which was kind of a negative as to why they decided not to even look at this anyway.
She's correct. I saw that too.
Okay, so between the two of you, or anybody else that, I did not watch it live, is there a rationale for how they drew this map if they didn't have the numbers?
So it's my understanding that the numbers are intact and that they do have them, and that, I think that was clarified later in the meeting. It is also my understanding from talking with my counterpart, one of my counterparts in the county, that they are balanced in terms of population numbers. That's the work that they did when they went back and created both of the district maps. Remember, what's most important here is that equal population distribution, and so they did adhere to those numbers. We do not have them with us on this map, but yes, they were equally distributed.
But this is one that they're not, they are not looking at.
Right, what we're understanding is 6A and 6B are not under consideration. That was what was decided this morning at their meeting.
So does anybody see anything positive that you wanted to include on this one? Ms. Fisher?
Yes, yeah, I would just say that it does preserve those already existing, fully populated communities, and geographically, it looks a little bit more easy to manage.
Any other comments on?
Anything else on this map?
6A.
Yes.
There was one of the points about splitting up communities or something, I don't know where it is on here, but that is not being adhered to with this map.
Maybe the limited splitting of established neighborhoods, is that the one you're referring to?
It's split right in the middle.
Okay. Okay, anything else on 6A? All right, we're rounding out, here we are. Was there one more? I'm sorry. Ms. Patrica, did you have one for 6A?
No.
Okay, then let's move on to 6B. Here we go. Strengths or opportunities?
All right, Mrs. Patrica, for 6B?
So this one clearly does not respect core existing boundaries, and it splits Astero, for sure. And natural boundaries are not, not natural, man-made boundaries are not entirely respected in this one either, at least in the area of the county with which I am most familiar. Those are my comments, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Gittens?
You can just copy and paste what I said about 6A.
Okay, okay, yeah. It almost makes sense that this may be why these were rejected. They look very, you know.
I believe that's, yes, I think we're thinking, we're all thinking in the same manner, that's for sure.
Okay.
Okay, any other feedback we want to provide on 6B? Strengths or opportunities?
Anybody?
We need more information. We need the data.
Yeah, and I don't think anybody had any strengths. Did anybody want to add any strengths for A or B, 6A or B? Seems like that's a no. Okay.
Yep, okay, so here's where we're at, at this point, so we're going to go to our next slide. So as we've been saying, we have some considerations that need to be made. One is, we, you know, need to make a decision at some point, and we, when we come back for our next meeting, that's where we're going to be asking for consensus from the board. Are we going with the county in terms of one of the county maps? Are we looking at another map to be drawn? And like we said, Davis Demographics is prepared to make that happen. So those are basically our three choices. What we heard from you today is there are certainly strengths and opportunities for most of the maps. We definitely paused, like you did, with 6A and 6B, and did not see, like you saw, a tremendous amount of strengths, and so we're feeling fairly confident that you would not be asking for us to come forward with a 6A or 6B recommendation moving forward into the next meeting. If there's anybody that feels like a 6A or 6B should be considered, please let us know. If not, we are probably going to whittle those two away at this point.
Is there anybody who wants to, raise your hand if you would like to keep A and B, 6A and B in consideration? Anybody? That looks like that would be a good thing to do.
Okay, so that helps us with taking one more step forward on the decisions. Yes, ma'am.
There was a comment at the county commission this morning, too, about a suggestion of just taking three, five. just taking 3, 5, Commissioner Hammond's and the NAACP's to review. The, one of the board members said that everyone should have a chance to look at all, but I did want to put that out there, that it does kind of sound like a leaning of sorts, but...
Yep, the other thing I would add, if I could, you know, we have not had a chance yet, and nor have you, to analyze the NAACP map, any other maps that might come forward on November 2nd from groups, as well as Commissioner Hammond's map. So we would respectfully ask that we move that to the discussion at the beginning of November, so you have the same opportunity to digest it. We can get you some demographic information, get you additional information. Then you'll be, I think, in a better position to make some judgments about that.
Yes, Mrs. Patrica.
So if I could ask Attorney DePree Bruno, so the Southern Poverty Law Center came in front of us, do you remember this? Ms. Morgan, do you remember this? Ms. Givinelli, Ms. Fisher, came in front of us proposing a change to our boundaries, proposing a redistricting of our boundaries. The United States Supreme Court handed down a decision from between the time that they presented to us and the time we had to make a decision, and it made the adoption of their map unconstitutional. Could you dig into that a little bit, please, and help me to, help us to understand how that case impacts any of the maps that come in front of us?
I will do that.
Please, and thank you.
Point of order, Madam Chair, is in a directive to the attorney supposed to come from a consensus of the board.
Okay, Mrs. Patrica, would you repeat what you would like for Mrs. DePree Bruno to do?
I think I'm allowed to ask the board attorney to help me understand the law in my decision-making, in my individual seat, so I'm not entirely sure that I'm asking for a memo, but I'm happy to get board consensus if that's what's required. I'd like to know the state of United States constitutional decision-making on our decision-making here at the table, with regard to specific cases handed down most recently.
Okay, so Attorney DePree Bruno, is this something that is going to take a significant amount of time that you would like board direction from, or?
Given that there was a point of order that was made, I would request a consensus.
All right, and let's do that right now. You've heard Mrs. Patrica's request, consensus. Okay, it looks like 7-0, so if you would please do that and send out your information to all of us, as you normally do, anyway.
So thank you very much. So as we talked about before, we have a little variance in our timeline depending on what the next meeting outcome is. When we come back to you, again, November 2nd will be community group presentations. November 3rd, we come back to you, digest the couple of new maps that were disclosed recently today at the county commission meeting. We will have some additional conversation, and at that point, really be looking to you to guide us. Are we going with one of the county maps, or are we going with a different one? That is the decision point that we will need consensus on at the very next time we come to, before you on November 3rd. And then at that point, that will determine where we go from here. It'll help us make a decision on if we're going with one of the county maps, we're pretty much on target for our original timeline. If we decide to do something different, and that's okay, we've built in some adjustment where the final decision will be made on December 14th. So we just wanted with that to leave you with any additional questions you have or any additional information we can provide to you as we prepare for the November 3rd special briefing.
Okay.
Turn the floor back over to you.
Additional questions or additional information requested. And I'm sure that Dr. Carl, if any of us have a question that comes up on, after we process, a lot of information here to process, after we process all of this, that she would welcome questions in the next several days to help out.
Absolutely, anytime. You want to stop by and talk, or send me a question, you're welcome to do that. And that goes for our team as well. If anybody can answer questions, we're pleased to do that.
Dr. Carlin?
Yes.
If I may for a second, Madam Chair, it was in 2017 in February to the question raised by Ms. Patrica when the NAACP presented to the board. So to Ms. Bruno, it was in February of 2017, and the research that we provided, when they requested a special consideration in that odd number of years to have the lines redrawn. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Was it the Southern Poverty Law Center, or was it the NAACP? And is that similar to, or is that related to the paper, the white paper that Dr. McCullough has made?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Bruno. You're exactly correct. It's connected to the white paper, and I believe it was the Southern Coalition for Social Justice.
Do we, do you happen to know if our videos go back that far?
Yes.
At least that far, right?
You can find that meeting, yes.
So what was, what was the date again? You had the date?
Yes, ma'am. The conversation arose on February 21st, 2017.
So if I may, Madam Chair, you're not going to get a lot from that meeting in terms of the impact of the law. You'll get the presentation, but the law changed, and then we had to come back to the table and say no, so...
Okay, and obviously, I, some of us came on the board after that, but it's just a good piece of information to have, and, you know, just, in case anybody's interested, anybody out there in the audience or in Cyberland that wants to go back and delve into a little Lee County history, February 21st, 2017, you should be able to see the video.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, Mrs. Jordan and then Mrs. Javina.
I just want to say, thank you to Dr. Savage for helping me find this, and I would tell everybody to get on here, because it's really interesting how you can hone into an exact street. So it does help you to look at, so you have an idea of what you're, what you are actually seeing. So I thought that was great, and thank you, Ms. Gittens, for saying what's that.
And Ms. Givinelli, you had something?
Yes, actually, I have people in the community talk to me or ask me about single-member districts, and I don't know if that's an appetite or just a conversation that maybe we should have up here at the dais, so just to have the conversation, and it was a discussion. So, and I don't know if anybody wants to jump in on any of that.
When you say that, are you seven?
Yes.
Seven?
Would eliminate the two counties and to make it single-member. And that could, because that could definitely change our boundaries and, you know, with districts and...
Yeah, I have to go to seven, and I have heard that comment made. As a matter of fact, I believe at least one person from EDAC brought that up a week ago.
Yes, so I just thought we should have that conversation and at least get the appetite of this board on that. Thank you.
Okay, so can we make a note of that for...
Because that could be a whole different...
Before November 2nd?
Yeah, that could be a whole different map.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, anybody else have anything to add to this? All righty, thank you so much for all the time you've taken.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the, we appreciate your comments today. Thank you.
And so, yes, I know, but we have logistical things to do. We would be taking two breaks. So we're just going, we're going to go on to public comment, and then we, as a board, are going to be moving down into the pit area, the tables that are set up in front of the dais, and we're going to have to, for video purposes, have, we'll take a break at that point. I know it's been a long time, but this is important business. So, Mrs. DePree Bruno, if you will go ahead and read the rules for public comment now.
Thank you, Madam Chair. School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda. If you completed a public comment card, please make sure that it is in the basket. Please be advised that the board will not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. Speakers may not address board members by name and personal attacks against individual board members, the board as a whole, the superintendent, or district staff are prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone per Board Policy 1.11 and may be removed from the chambers. There will be one warning. Per Board Policy 1.11, the time per speaker is three minutes, and you will find a countdown on the big screen in the front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. You should address the board as a whole versus individual board members as they are a collective board. Please state your name prior to making your comment, and I will call six individuals this time, as we have six speakers, Madam Chair.
All right, do we have, so you have cards for six, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have anybody else in the room who wants the opportunity to speak and has not filled out a card? Okay, let's then commence with the public speaking.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Public comments, sorry.
Will the following individuals please line up? Denise Nystrom, Jerry Ware, Fred Morgan, Adrian Stevens, Mike Love, Chrissy Divageli.
If I may, I would really prefer to wait for Mrs. Fisher to return, because she is here, and I want to be able to address the entire board. So I won't give up my place in line.
Speaker, please.
Do we have anybody who wishes to move ahead?
Point of order, it's that point in the agenda, they speak or they don't.
May I begin?
DePree Bruno, weigh in on this, please.
Ms. Ware, please begin.
Good afternoon. Thank you, board, once again, for the opportunity to come before you. However, I really want to say that I am very discouraged, because at the last school board meeting, I clearly asked you, what is the school board doing for redistricting, and no one responded. So to me, you like transparency. First of all, I'm very tired, because I was at the county commissioners' meeting this morning, participating, and watching you go through the maps that we've asked them to throw out, and they have thrown out, you wasted your time. We are not asking you to follow their guidelines, because first of all, we have two different types of elections. The county commissioners have a at-large, you are a single-member district. You should be drawing your own maps. It's apparent that you are not knowledgeable about the population number. Cape Carle is too large to have 152, so therefore, you know that means that you're going to have to pull from that area. I know Dr. Savage alluded to the way that you can draw these maps, but hypothetically, not like the firm that you've hired, but it can be done, because you have to take in the fact, the demographics, what the numbers are in each area. We ask the county commissioners to throw their maps out, to bring us back from across the river. When I mean say bring us, that's Dunbar. That is why you wasted your time with some of the maps. They did, however, come back with 6A and 6B, bringing us back from across the river. The NAACP has presented a map that should be considered. If you all listened to the hearing this morning from the county commissioners, you will notice that the maps that you all are trying to study have been thrown out. Draw your own maps. You can do this, because you need to assess the needs as they vary from area to area. We brought us back from across the river because of one reason: not contiguous. Takes a rubber band to stretch all the way from Dunbar all the way to Bruntstow Road. Once again, I ask you, board, take the time, get the knowledge, and get someone to help you draw your own maps. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, Christine Divageli. I have a couple of things. So first, it's about the fiscal year '22 budget. I have an attachment that was on that budget. The very last entry, elimination of 20 bus operator positions. I would like to see some kind of, and maybe Ms. Desmores or somebody can help with this, I'd like to see a breakdown, or at least know...
Excuse me, Ms. Divageli, you're talking about buses?
I'm talking about the redist, about what was discussed in today's briefing meeting.
The capital project update?
No, it was in the first, it was in the budget. I have all my stuff separated, from action meeting to briefing. I'm in the right one.
Yeah, because I don't recall anything about the buses. We did have a report from maintenance.
It wasn't in the, it wasn't in the first one? The first topic that we went over today?
Which was the capital project updates, which are the projects that they're working on, on the different schools. There was, there was...
That's okay. That's all right. Yeah, that's fine. I'll talk about it tonight. It's not a big deal. Anyway, so in regards to the redistricting, then, I think in a perfect world, parents would like to see the district develop their own map, one that best represents our district and its unique demographics. I think it's a wonderful idea to explore the idea, or to explore the option of single-member districts. This is, this is a large, we have a very large county, and there are areas, like I personally, being a member of District 1, don't see why Sanibel, or I mean, I don't see why a lot of those islands are included in on that. Like, we could be a little bit more creative, especially if every member on the dais had representation or had an area of their own. So I do look forward to seeing, hopefully, seeing some of those examples from your team as well. So I don't have any comments about the maps that we saw today. I don't think any of them accurately represent our county, especially our school. But, all right, thank you.
Denise Nystrom. I have been attending these board meetings and have heard board member District 6 express the need for construction and renovation in East Lee and Lehigh more times than I can care to count. And I have stated many times that I feel the lack of attention to that area is discrimination. I live in Benita, Astero, and I find the building of these new schools deplorable. You can stop the building of the middle school in Astero and put the money toward East Lee. I'll support that. This is not on the superintendent, because he was not the superintendent for all those years when these decisions were made. However, the appropriate thing to do in any district is to create a building utilization committee consisting of board members, administrators, principals, and operations, so that you can assess the needs of every single building every year. Need could have been proven if the correct procedures were in place, but the former superintendent, the District 3 member, and others were running the play-for-pay game and...
Excuse me, Ms. Nystrom, you know the rules of no personal attacks.
Excuse me, excuse me, I have a lot of, I have a lot of history on this.
I know, but there's no personal attacks, Ms. Nystrom.
And they did not answer to the community or to the other board members.
This is warning number one, Ms. Nystrom.
I've gone on. Okay. When you don't have that kind of situation, you can be good stewards of the community's tax dollars. But having advocated for the half-cent sales tax to build these buildings and give teachers and staff raises should not have occurred. And by the way, the teachers and the staff didn't get that raise, and this is on video recording. I have never once heard that board member offer to visit East Lee or Lehigh schools until now, until after the racially charged comments have been made about the Guatemalan students. But I have heard the District 6 board member ask repeatedly for data that supports the building on Three Oaks, because a half a million dollars is being spent on new portables, a half a million dollars. Have you gotten it? Have you gotten the data? All of the schools should be looked at, because they should all have science labs, auditoriums, libraries, gyms, athletic fields. And regarding the innovation school, who will be paying for the maintenance, turf, custodial staff at the quad... staff at the quadruple A for the park area and the additional fields? Will that be the school district? It appears that because of the superintendent, East Lee and Lay High are finally being looked You would have not been looking at the same old, same old if you were looking at the entire situation all of these years. Regarding the redistricting maps, you should have your map drawers draw the seven different districts in several different ways so that you can assess whether or not the at-large works better or not, just for your own choice, so you can make a bettering choice. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Superintendent, School Board Members, and Attorney Bruno. My name is Frederick Dunbar Morgan II, representative from the NAACP. We would like the Lee County School Board to draw its own maps. We urge you not to adopt the maps from the county and draw your own maps. The Board has the opportunity to draw districts that will not undermine the political participation of voters of color and keep communities of interest together. We feel that the 2021 Lee County School Board redistricting process has lacked full transparency. To ensure meaningful participation, you still have an opportunity for that participation. Zero public hearings have been held. Feedback from public has not occurred. Create a public hearing schedule to allow the community to give you input. Public hearing times should be made convenient, not during the morning, in the evening, when people can get here and at least voice their opinions. Offering online public comment is not a replacement to in-person testimony. People should hear from you personally. There is still time for the Board to create an inclusive, transparent, and participatory process and draw maps that will prioritize our children's future, not political gain. Thank you.
My name is Mike Love, member of the NAACP. We urge the Board, as you heard Mr. Morgan said, not to adopt the same map as the county board of commissioners. It's very uncanny and weird to sit as a member and listen to a SWOT analysis, strength and weakness, being done on maps that the county who created the maps are not going to use. That was very enlightening and depressing to me. The school board and the county board of commissioners use two different types of election methods. This alters how voters elect their preferred candidates of choice and how members interact with voters. If the Board adopt the same redistricting plan as the county board of commissioners, it would ignore the unique needs and challenges facing children and their parents in Lee County's school district. The Board has an opportunity to draw districts that will not undermine the political participation of voters of color and keep communities together. I also must stress the fact that to have meetings at this time of the day when parents are at work is unreasonable and unthinking. There is still time for the Board to create an inclusive, transparent, and participatory process and draw maps that will prioritize our children's future, not political gain. But I also must say, if you adopt the county's map, one or two of you might not be here next time around.
Does that conclude the public comment?
Just to conclude, yes, ma'am.
Okay, just very briefly regarding the comments on the maps, please be aware that we have made no decisions, that we are, today, we looked at what the county commissioners have, and also keep in mind that we have not ruled out drawing our own maps, as you saw in the timelines. We will be, by November 2nd, making a decision whether we're going to be going with one of the county maps or if we are going to ask Davis Demographics, our firm that are consultants with Proximity Plan, to help us draw our own maps. And, you know, for me, a couple of us are at-large through the whole county, and as far as I'm concerned, it doesn't matter one way or the other to me which way we go. And I do understand what the people that were here from NAACP are saying, because I have heard that was mentioned by at least a couple people at our last EDACT, Equity and Diversity Committee, meeting. So, you know, that's something that we have not ruled out. If you'll recall, right before we started public comment, there was a request, I think it was Mrs. Juvenelli, I think, that requested the conversation, that exact conversation, because she had spoken with some of her constituents, for seven single-member districts. So nothing is off the table at this point. Yes, we are coming down to the wire on these, but you can rest assured that nothing is off the table, and we are looking forward to the special time, the meeting, for NAACP to present their maps. So, you know, perhaps some of my board colleagues will have further comments. All right, we've been going for a really long time, and what we're going to be doing next is, we have some additional pieces that we are going to be covering as a board, and for that, we are going to be moving to the area in front of the dais. And so to get the logistics going, we will have, let's say we'll have a seven-minute, we'll have a seven-minute break, and then we will reconvene at the tables below.
Extra one?
Yeah, I'll take it.
Just draw it on the back or something.
All right. Hello again, and we are about to commence a very special part of our briefing meeting. And we are going to do this until five o'clock. So we have 50 minutes, and there's some things that Mrs. Dupree Bruno has asked us to participate with, and I am going to turn it over to her to do this portion of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. So everyone should have their statute. Everyone should have their robot picture, and we're going to go through this a little bit. We had our training last year about the responsibilities of the school board, responsibilities of the superintendent. So this is a quick 15-minute refresher as we move forward towards our training. So the statute, really it's the Constitution, Article nine that creates, I'm sorry, Article four that creates the school board. And then you have the statute that pretty much codifies the school board. So Florida statute 1,001.32 creates the district school system, and then it creates the district school board, which, what does the, what is the responsibility of the district school board? Anybody?
Is that a real question?
Yeah, it's a real question.
Oh, I thought it was. To operate and oversee public schools.
Operate.
Control and supervise all free public schools.
Operate control.
Make sure that, can everybody here, make sure everybody is speaking into the microphone.
Supervise and control all public schools. And then what about the district school superintendent? Dr. Savage?
The responsibility for the administration and management of the schools and the staff.
Okay. And then we also have section four, which is the school principal. So what I want to do is for you to imagine something. Pick up an onion, and we're going to peel it. So the first layer is being an elected official. And part of that being an elected official is also all of the personal things that goes along, the politics, the agendas, and all of that stuff. We're gonna peel that off. The next thing we're gonna peel off is government and the sunshine, the sunshine law, open government. And does anybody know exactly what that is? What are the requirements statutorily? Notice, open to the public, and minutes be taken whenever there's two or more school board members going to look at a formal action or a rule or something of that nature, right? We're gonna peel that off. Next thing we're gonna peel off is the public records law. Public records, sunshine, and being an elected official. So what do I have left?
People, us, school board. You remember these?
And what is the system?
District, school district.
School district. But when I peel off the elected official, I peel off the sunshine, I peel off the public records, I'm really just looking at a corporation, right? I know that some of you have had that private sector corporate experience, and so this is what I want you to imagine, because what kind of changes it is all of the regulatory things. But we're really looking at a legal organization, a corporation. Now, in a corporation, you have a board of directors. What is their job in a corporation?
Overseen management.
Overseen management. They govern. What are they looking for?
Performance.
Performance. And how do they know if it's, if they're performing, if the company's performing well?
Outcome.
Profit and loss, P and L statements, right? What am I doing? And who are they responsible for? Board of directors of a large $2 billion corporation.
Shareholders.
Shareholders, right? So what are they trying to do for their shareholders?
Maximize profits.
Maximize profits, get dividends. Now, underneath the board of directors, what do you have?
CEO, CFO, COO.
Chief executive officer, chief financial officer. What do they do?
Implement the direction and vision of the board, maximize profits.
Okay. And then underneath that, what do you have? Let's say this is a company that sells watches. What do you have next?
Salespeople, management, grocery retail.
So you have all of these other people underneath, the CFO, the CEO, and then you're gonna have your storefronts too, right? Because you're gonna be selling these watches. And those storefronts are the ones who you're relying on to be able to get those profits as it trickles back up to the CEO and trickles back up to the board of directors, who then has to make sure that their shareholders are getting their maximum dividends, P and L, profit and loss, right? So what is the board of directors for a school district? Who are the board of directors?
We are minus sunshine and...
When you peel all that stuff off, so who is it? The school board?
Yeah.
You?
Yeah.
Your directors. And what's your job? Same as, same as the board?
Maximize education, maximize turnout.
So what's your profit and loss?
Student achievement.
Student achievement.
Student achievement. That is your profit and loss. And then you have shareholders. Who are your shareholders?
Public.
Your stakeholders, right?
Staff, students.
Parents, community, they're your, they're your stakeholders, are your shareholders. So as the board of directors, you're there to maximize student achievement, which is the profit and loss, for your shareholders who are your stakeholders. Does that make sense? Okay. Then you have your CEO. So who's your CEO?
Superintendent.
And what does a CEO do in a $2 billion corporation?
Runs the operation.
Runs the operation.
Oversees.
Oversees the operation, manages the operation, administers the corporation, right? And he reports to whom?
Us.
He reports to the board of directors. Very similar to this situation. So what I want you to do is with this graph, write down board of directors at the top and school board in the same box, because they're one in the same in our scenario.
Yeah.
What is it?
School board.
Board.
Board of directors and school board.
And then what goes in the next box?
Superintendent.
CEO. And the statute actually calls your superintendent the chief executive officer for the school district. Your storefronts, your schools?
Chiefs.
Your principals? Probably, your chiefs probably be over here somewhere, but these would be like all your schools, your principals, your storefronts that are working for what you're looking for, your profit and loss, which is your student achievement. Makes sense?
Yep.
Now let's talk about how this is supposed to flow. In a corporation, is there the board of directors here, CEO here, storefronts there? In a corporation, how does it work?
Are you talking about direction?
Direction, direction, and working the system. Corporation is like a system too, right? So how does it work?
It's supposed to work like this.
Is it supposed to work like this?
Depends on the leadership.
Is that how it's supposed to work?
Yeah.
Okay. I agree with you. That's how it's supposed to work. You have your board of directors, you have your CEO that's running the business, the corporation, going back to the board of directors and say, okay, here's my profit and loss for this year, here's what's going on this quarter, here's the problem that I'm foreseeing, here's the help that I need. That's, that's his job, her job, to go to the board of directors. And board of directors say, okay, this is what we're going to do, this is what we want you to do, this is how we want you to, you know, that kind of stuff. Am I correct, Ms. Morgan?
Absolutely.
And then, so the CEO then takes the direction from here and then goes to the storefronts. And of course, there's people in between. You have all of your chiefs and the managers and all that stuff in between, but eventually it gets down to the storefront, because the storefront is the one that's actually getting the profits, right? And then it goes back up. That's how a corporation operates. And when you peel back, the politics, the elected official, the agenda, the sunshine law, the public records law, you're really left with the corporation. Does that make sense? Now, what do you think happens when the board of directors is over here and the CEO is over here and it's not connected? What happens to that corporation?
Miscommunication.
What else? What happens to the corporation when the board of directors and the CEO are not aligned?
It fails.
Anybody disagree? And then what happens to your profit and loss if there's no alignment?
Goes down.
Goes down. How, how do you support your storefront and your profit and loss if this is messed up here? Does that make sense? Ms. Jevonelli, does that make sense? I know, Ms. Gittens, you were in the private sector as well. What are your thoughts?
That's the way a corporation works, that you follow pretty much the procedure. If there's issues that the board of directors finds, they would be able to communicate with the CFO to make a difference, and the board of directors would know that the difference or changes have been made because of the profit and loss at the end of a quarter or period or whatever. And then it kind of goes back up the chain, because the CFO then would come to the board of directors and sit down and discuss what the intention is to fix it.
Exactly. The company goes like this. It's a flow, right? Up and down, up and down. That's how it works. Now, we get muddled, because we have other things, and granted, there's some statutory obligations as well, we gotta take that into consideration, but we get muddled with some of the other stuff and forget the skeleton and the basic structure of how we're supposed to do business. I think another example I want you to think about is the body system. What is the statute, 1,001.32? What's the first thing that the statute says? What is it?
District system.
The district system. And within that district system, you have a school board, you have a superintendent, you have principals. Doesn't the statute align with this? Does anybody think it doesn't? Does anybody think that the statute does not align with this basic corporate structure?
It does.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes, it definitely aligns with it.
Anybody think it doesn't? It's a district system. That's the way it's supposed to work. Now, when you're looking at a system, what happens when a part of the system is not working?
Nothing, non-functional.
Derailed. I think of a train, just totally derailed.
Do you agree? Anybody disagree? I mean, think of your own body system. You know, if you hurt one part, you just don't realize how that one part is integral to everything else, right? So what do you think happens when the brains, the head of the system is not working?
There's no system.
Yeah. It's done.
Right? Isn't that, isn't that, isn't that, am I correct or am I not correct? So we're gonna work on the system and go back to the basics, peeling all those layers off so we can fix the system. Because these guys down here, your storefront, they are so dependent on the brains of the operation. Yes, ma'am.
We are also dependent on them, because without them, we cannot succeed.
If they don't give you the student achievement, it doesn't flow back up, so you can go to your shareholders and say, hey, here are your dividends for this year, right? So it's, it's, it's a system that goes down and up, down and up, but there is a flow to the down and up. It's not like this. It's like this. Corporations that are successful have good systems, and they follow the legal structure. This is a legal structure. Now, I'm gonna talk, we talked a little bit about the CEO. I'm gonna bring one other thing that's, that's, I want to bring up. So in this system right here, you have your CFO, you have your CEO, your COO, vice president, all these other things. But you also sometimes have, well, not sometimes, in a $2 billion corporation, you're gonna have a general counsel, right? If the CEO relies on the general counsel to defend against the board of directors, what do you think? Or vice versa, if the board of directors relies on the general counsel to defend against the CEO or against each other, how does that work? Everybody has a role to play, and you gotta follow the system, go back to the basics. So that was my 15 minutes for today, and I'm gonna pass it to Ms. Morgan.
But can I ask a question now?
Yes, ma'am.
Because the general counsel, in this scenario, would be you, but you would not be defending him against us, because you're our counsel. So it's just a little bump in the road.
So
It compromises things.
Yes.
So, but, but, but let's talk about what you just said. This is a system. So how is the general counsel defending, in a school district? There's two times when you're gonna have a conflict between a superintendent and board. The first is when you're negotiating the superintendent's salary. Clearly a conflict, because the superintendent has a personal interest, the board has an interest, you're negotiating that salary. The second time is when there's a recommendation for termination of an employee or term, or expulsion of a student. Those, that's the other time that you may have a conflict where the board may Those, that's the other time that you may have a conflict where the board may not agree with the recommendation that's being made by the superintendent, and it comes to you in a quasi judicial hearing. And in your particular case, you don't even make those decisions, because you have an ALJ that you hire to actually conduct your hearings and hear all the evidence. So by the time it gets to you, you're not even deciding on the facts of the case. You can't, your policy doesn't allow you to. So all you're doing is really adopting the ALJ's recommendation or adopting, you know, there's some minor times where there may be an issue, but for the most part, you guys farm that out, and ALJ does your actual hearing for you. Yes, ma'am.
The other issue that has always bothered me is that we don't, unlike a private corporation, we don't have a fiduciary duty. By law, we don't have a fiduciary, we should, we should all exercise it, but we don't have one.
And, and, and that, remember last year when we had the training and we talked about the potential statute that was floating around to create a fiduciary duty for a public agency, and it didn't pass? You're absolutely correct. The issue with regards to a fiduciary duty, and it's not written anywhere, and trust me, I've looked, but as an elected official, you know that your charge is to protect the public trust, right? So if you're protecting the public trust, right there in eight, in a, in that is a fiduciary duty. You're, you're stewards of the taxpayer dollars. You are there to work with your district, to come up with student achievement, to maximize that. So you do, really, even though it's not codified in the statute, you do have a fiduciary duty, at, at the very least, a responsibility.
But the essence of the fiduciary duty is always putting the corporation ahead of yourself.
Yes.
Always. You can never make a decision that is in your own self, self-interest.
That's absolutely correct, and, and we can go deep into that, but you have the duty of loyalty, you have all kinds of duties in the corporation, and one of the biggest ones is your duty to your shareholders, which is to maximize their profit. So your biggest duty in a corporation, or in this scenario, is student achievement for your stakeholders, for your students, your parents. And you have to put the district, the corporation first. That's why we peel back the, the onions, to remember, this is the skeleton. Any other questions? We're going to talk some more about this, but this was one exercise.
Thank you.
Now, Ms. Morgan and Ms. Fisher.
Okay. So you were asked to read an October 21 post on Bloomberg, "Five Tips for Dealing With Difficult Board Members," and I would add dysfunctional board, dysfunctional board. So I'm just going to briefly read the tips, and then I'm going to go through some examples, but I'm briefly going to read the tips for the listening audience who hasn't had a chance to see the article. Tip number one, confront the issue head-on and in person. Initiate a frank discussion of the issue. Provide an opportunity for open, honest discussion. The worst thing you can do is start a he said, she said, or she said, she said, public conversation. Focus on the organization, not the person. If you believe that board member conduct is the problem, ask yourself, how do we deal with the board member problem in the context of the mission? And that is, that is a solution that requires the entire board, not one person. Confronting poor behavior is a business decision, so focus the discussion on the business part of the relationship. You want to change behaviors, not because anyone is a bad person, but because doing so will serve the district well. Tip number three, use specific examples, describe behaviors, and I'm going to, I'm going to give you three examples. When board member A begins talking, board member B rolls her eyes and puts her head down. When board member C talks, board member D is not listening, but has raised a hand and preparing a rebuttal or retort. When board number, board number, excuse me, board member E puts her head down and does not appear to be actively engaged in the work. So how do you deal with that? Tip number four, use I messages. Describe the behavior in terms of its impact on you and your perceptions of it. When you, when, when I say you, I'm attacking you. If I say I, I'm asking, I'm, I'm asking you to come into the conversation. So for, in the examples above, instead of stating, you put your head down and roll your eyes when I am speaking, say, I feel like you have no respect for what I have to say at the board table. Or, instead of saying you aren't interested in what I have to say, but are judging my opinion negatively before I've even finished, or you don't respect what I have to say, say, I feel you are not listening to me, and it seems my opinion doesn't matter to you. The goal is not to hurt feelings, but to engage in an honest conversation. And then tip number five, and I like this one, state your objection, then shut up. I thought that was great. That's putting it right where it needs to be. Give the other person a chance to process your information and respond, don't interrupt. What you perceive to be a problem may simply be a misunderstanding. People have to have a chance to talk. So Attorney Dupree Bruno talked about peeling back the onion. I was on a school board, so I'm going to show you an example between being in a sunshine state and being in a, in a, in a good state. I was on a school board in New York, I was a school board chair, I had a new school board member who sat very quietly for the first couple of meetings. We were, also, we were allowed to have executive sessions with respect to personnel in addition to legal matters in, in executive session, so we didn't do everything in public the way we do here. This person sat quietly for a couple of meetings, and one morning I got up and I read my email, and there was a scathing damnation of the board, of the superintendent, of everything that had been done wrong. So I fired off an email saying, you're out of your, your, you're out of your lane, you're in the wrong place. You can't initiate this with an email to everybody that you work with. We, we, we all need to talk about it as a board. So he called me and he said, well, you have lunch with me. In, in New York, you can do this. So we had lunch together. We talked about the issue that had, had so upset him, but he had not discussed at the table. It was a great conversation, because basically what we learned is that I process information very differently than the way he processed it. And so when we had an issue with the table, we really had to be careful to understand that. When I explained something the way it, it worked for me, I had to give him time, and I had to make certain that I included him by addressing him specifically. I need to hear, Paul, what you want to say about this, and you need to say it now, and I'll give you time to think about it, but we need to hear it. So that's the kind of thing you can do when you don't have the sunshine law. So now I'm going to move to an example here of my bad conduct, using the tips. After a very dispiriting board mem, board meeting for me, very dispiriting, very frustrating, ready to walk away, I got home, I picked up the phone, and I called two board members, and I told them they didn't know their job, they didn't understand what they were doing, I didn't respect them as board members, and I didn't trust them at the table. Of course, they said nothing, they hung up, I hung up, and as soon as I hung up, I realized that I, I had vented my frustration, I had gotten it off my chest, but I had put it on the chest of everybody else at that board table. So I'm going to just stop for a minute, I'm going to give you a little personal anecdote, see if I can get you to loosen up a bit. So I was the oldest of three daughters, a couple of years apart, so I was like the second mother. And by, by the age of six, I was a scold, you know, don't do this, don't do that. I was a scold. And I got away with that for a long time. I, my name, one of my two nicknames in the family, was Paragon of Virtue. My, as soon as I started down that road, somebody would say, ah, it's the Paragon of Virtue, she knows what everybody should do and how they should do it. So, you know, ultimately, as Chris was saying yesterday, we grow up, we, we mature. So I learned that. You don't do that with people, because you don't have any friends and you lose the friends you have. So what should I have done when I was so friggin frustrated? I should have asked each person individually if they would meet with me with a board attorney and sit down and talk about what our understanding of our role was, in each, each of us, what our understanding of our role was, and how it should, how it should appear at the board table. I should have focused on the fact that it's not about what you are doing that frustrates me, it's about the fact that I'm trying to earn the confidence of the public, I'm trying for the board to be credible, and when we don't have their confidence and we're not credible, we're not doing our job. So it's not about what somebody else did, and it's not about how I react to it, it's about how I feel it is undermining the credibility of the board and the competence of the, of the public. So that was tip number two, focus on the organization. So tip number three, use specific examples. Well, I think I've covered it, I didn't provide detailed explanations of how I felt, I, but I will tell you that I was ashamed and embarrassed, and I said to myself, the scold, that little six-year-old girl who got frustrated, that paragon of virtue came up to the surface and, 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 and did it. So let's see, use I messages. Instead of stating that the actions at the table were unprofessional, I should have explained how I believed our tolerance for unprofessional conduct at the table undermined our work and public credibility. So I said that. Listen, is the fifth tip. I didn't open the door to anybody else's understanding of what had happened at that table. The only understanding that I had was mine. I didn't listen to anybody else, have any expectation that somebody else had a different understanding. My understanding, that scold was up, was operational. So bottom line, that was one drop of poison that I put in the pool of water that this board drinks from, and that's not the only one. I have, in, in, in the three years I've been on this board, I have misbehaved in more than one instance, and every time I do, every time that scold comes out, every time that paragon of virtue is, is in the forefront, a drop of poison goes in our well. But I will say that I don't believe I'm the only one putting poison in the well, and that's why we're here. All of us have done something to this well, and I'm, I'm trying, Betsy, to rip off that Band-Aid and put out there some of the things that I know trouble people. So that's my take on this article. I hope it helps.
Thank you.
Ms. Fisher?
So the other article was by Alex Count, "Spotting and Fixing Dysfunctional Nonprofit Boards." So this really was more appropriate for nonprofit boards, however, the information can be generalized. So he talked about how building and sustaining high-functioning governing bodies is arduous, time-consuming work, but it's worth the effort. Run well, boards can bolster an organization, provide access to influential figures, and inspire confidence in stakeholders, help manage risk, and improve leaders' performance. So that sounded really idealistic to me, and the author goes on to say that drawing on his personal experience was tricky, and I sometimes do that. I draw on my personal experience, because I've been around so long that I have grown roots here. And so he observed three main types of unsuccessful governing bodies, the rubber-stamp board, and boards in the past have been accused of that, not this board, the micromanaging board, and I think we need to look at ourselves when it comes to that. When the board takes on key, key management functions, in addition to its proper governing role, you know, the staff becomes disempowered. And I think that we have a situation where our behavior has negatively impacted the performance of our staff and their ability to feel confident and appreciated in the work they do. And then the balkanized boards, and that's kind of where people have their own agendas. And I think that's another area where we need to look at ourselves. Someone said to me the other day, you know, we need to get rid of somebody, you, you guys don't need that. And I said, this is a seven-member board, and we each have responsibility for this board. Every one of us is responsible for the situation that we have here today. So I hope that we can look at ourselves. One of the other important parts of the article, I thought, was how lack of diversity compounds dysfunction, and that ethnic, racial, and gender diversity are important. And, and I think that I expanded that a little bit in my mind's eye to some of the situations that we have now with our reports from our public and our situations in our schools with the kids, that there's a lack of tolerance and understanding, and that it's our job as the educational system to try to help people understand better what those diversity issues contribute, rather than detract from our community. Once a board becomes dysfunctional, turning it around requires immense effort and patience. So the usual things that we do, self-evaluation, external review, a retreat, term limits, and recruitment of new members are often ineffectual and lead to improvements that are difficult to sustain. So to inspire the members of a balkanized board, people with their own agendas, to really care about the entire organization, and for us, you know, we have, someone said to me one time, you know, the students, the staff, and the parents, the community, they are our customer, they are our stakeholders, and they are our finished product. So the, the community support, the parent involvement, and the success of the students really depends on the climate that we create. The author goes on to say that it's easy to notice red flags early and nip it in the bud, but I don't think we do that. So I think we have misplaced loyalties, a lot of times we, we usurp the functions and the authorities of the management. We have unexamined performance, and I saw something the other day about, you know, we should have these 360 evaluations, which I think Mrs. Morgan has brought to us over the years multiple times. We have stifled dissent. So a lot of times, I know I'm guilty of this, during the board meeting, there may be things I don't say, because I don't think it's going to do any good. And God rest his soul, Anthony Thomas used to say to me, Mary Fisher, you just go along to get along. Well, when I already know I'm outvoted, I might as well go along to get along, because getting along is critical to a, a governing body being successful. Another problem that this author identified was tolerating misbehavior. And he, he writes, "More than once I have observed people behave unprofessionally and even unethically around a board table," in ways that he doubted they would ever do in a business setting. So we've seen directors berate staff, ignore or minimize obvious conflicts of interest, and disregard people's novel solutions without acknowledging them. So poor behaviors lead to widespread dissension. Confronting these situations can be challenging, and I think that's what we're here to do with these series of meetings that we have agreed to participate in. I hope that we can become a healthy board of directors. I hope that we can become a healthy board of directors, focused on our mission and vision, and do those things that we each individually and personally need to do to help this board become a functioning governing body. We have some board priorities connected with our strategic plan that we have agreed to work on. Our names are all on here, all seven of us. So increase focus on social-emotional health of students, increase readiness for kindergarten, provide additional opportunities for student learning, increase school safety, prepare for future growth. And Ms. Gittens, God bless you. You're persistent, if nothing else, because I think you are trying to get attention to do that. Build a future-ready district workforce, and increase business and community partnership. As I was looking through a bunch of my stuff, I thought I would leave you with something that I received on November 15, 2011, from Larry Feldman in Miami-Dade. He was my mentor. And he said only words of wisdom. "Treat everyone with dignity and respect that you expect from them, and toward your own children and family, except nothing less. If you don't already, start each meeting by stating your board's mission, and that all decisions will be to benefit the students we serve." A couple of meetings ago, I think I said, "Well, where are the children?" Because that has not been part of our decision, our discussion at the table, and it really needs to be. We need to be focused, again, on our vision and mission. End each meeting thanking your board members and the superintendent and staff for a good meeting, and let them know you are honored to work with them. Go to an event in each of the other board members' districts during the year. Helps bind the notion that all serve all. Keep your humor, your smile, and your aspirin with you at all times, and call me anytime to let off steam. Thank you.
Thank you. One on time, Ms. Vaughn.
Ten minutes.
Is there any reaction to Ms. Fisher or Ms. Morgan's presentation?
I have some, but I am not, I don't know if I'm prepared to do it.
You peel back the onion, so.
I'm just not sure. I have to think through it because whatever I say is going to be taken in a different way than my intent.
So hold on to it because we're going to have continuous discussions, continuous meetings leading up to our retreat. So jot it down. Don't forget about it, and then we will talk about it.
Well, I do have one thing I would say. The reason that I put on my email quite some time ago, my Angela's quote, "When someone shows you who they are the first time, believe them." And I have struggled many times. I've looked at other quotes and thought, "Okay, I'll change it." And then when I sit and think about it, I just can't. I thought again a couple of weeks ago, "I'll take that off and put something else on," but it is so, it is so true. Ms. Fisher touched on something about the diversity piece, and you said something about that, that you need ethnic and gender and racial difference in order to expand your board. My picture is this, and the reason I have this is to remind me why I have to put one foot in front of the other to sit here. So.
The last part, Ms. Gittens, you said one foot in front of the other. I missed the last part.
To sit there.
Because there are times that more than, more than you know, I get in my car to come here for a meeting, and I literally want to turn around and go home. What's the point? Nothing, no one listens to the issues. People will give lip service and say, "How can I help you? It's terrible what, you know, is happening. How can I help you?" But it's, at times, I have felt like I'm entering a, an episode, an ongoing episode of Mean Girls. I really do. And you talk about the rolling of eyes and all that kind of good stuff, and the cutting me off, and the looking and saying, "We, you know, it's not about you." One of the things that you mentioned, I think it was number, one of your numbers, and you were saying something about the I statements, okay? And I have tried using that method, and then I am told very forcefully, "It's not about you." So I'm kind of up against a wall, and I just decided, because of this, I will say what I have to say. You don't have to agree with me. You don't have to help me, but until the last day I'm sitting here, I will say it. Until someone listens and understands that there are other issues. And see, honestly, that's why I think I'm here, so that you can understand. You honestly do not understand to the depth of your soul some of the issues I'm trying to explain. You all can say the word underserved or forgotten. You don't really understand until I explain it to you. But you have to listen to me with your head, your heart, and your mind to understand what I'm trying to say.
Ms. Gittens, Ms. Vaughn?
I'm kind of going in a different direction here because I'm a little bit piggybacking off the comment that Ms. Fisher made about go along to get along. That's, how do we affect change? When I ran for this position, I saw, as a teacher for eight years, I saw a lot of issues in the school. Of course, I look at governance and money spending and those kinds of things, but as a board member, my heart and I have a depth of expertise in the schools. It wasn't gained, I'll be frank, in Lee County. It was gained through my years in Texas when I was a department chair for 19 years in a district that actually gave teachers respect and input into what was going on. So one of the things that I have tried to do is pushing that as an agenda. Another one of my agendas, so to speak, is I feel like our best and brightest are forgotten. Of course, the lower-level kids, the bottom 25% are important. I'm not saying they're not, but we don't serve. There's a whole host of issues. This morning, I had a brief meeting with some people in academic services about book censorship, and I have lots of experience with challenged books, and I shared some of that with them. And I'm not trying to toot my horn, but I'll be honest, there have been things where I have talked to people in academics, including back when I was at Astero High School, that they had no knowledge about, and I shared it. I wasn't there to do anything but share it and make the district better. And my feeling is, and I'll just use that, is that all of us do come with our own strengths. And my perception is, and this is from before Dr. Savage assumed his role, that because I was not a, I like to call him an anointed one, member of the school board, because I had different views, and I wasn't afraid to say what my different views were, I was not regarded as a cooperative person. I wasn't regarded as a person, even by the former superintendent, that he, even though we were always mutual respect, at least in public, always, that I was not regarded as somebody that had anything to share, and the door was not open to me with my wealth of expertise because it was viewed as, "Well, that's not her role," or "That's, well, maybe not exactly, but it's my expertise, and if I have a way I can share it." And I shared it at Astero, and we actually, George Clover moved ahead with some of my ideas. Some he didn't, but some he did. Bottom line on this, because I'm kind of, I'm rambling, is that I came, I ran for this position not because I desired power or fulfillment. Hey, I've had my fulfillment. I showed all of you the picture of the Class of '88 reunion and my kids, who have grandchildren, some of them. I've had my fulfillment. This is a different kind of job. And I personally feel that unless there is debate, which is often viewed as, "She can't get along," or "She's not cooperative," I have felt that I have had to be assertive, very assertive, and sometimes I've gotten angry. Can't help that, but I try, but. And so, you know, there's a lot of things to unpack with this, and I feel like we have the, on the surface, not getting along, but it goes way, way, way deeper than that. It goes to each board member being viewed by, not just the superintendent, but by his or maybe at some point her, staff members. It kind of trickles, there's a trickle-down effect, and that's huge. And until that can be solved, where each of us can talk to the superintendent and then have access to talk to some staff members, you know, like, "Hey, I have this idea. Could this possibly work?" Or I feel like that door has opened a little bit just lately. But I'll tell you, my first whole, almost three years on this board, there was nothing that I could say where I was welcomed, and there are other people that could just walk in and get favors and tell right straight out, "I think this person should have the job," or "I need this to be done." That, to me, underlies this whole problem. So there you go. That's how I feel about it.
May I say, I appreciate you owning and focusing on you and admitting what you did wrong, and I look forward to my opportunity to do that as well.
It's five o'clock, so hold that thought, Ms. Fisher. We're going to jot that down. And before we leave, just think, I heard two things about how people are contributing to this board. One is being a voice for the underrepresented, and two, with the strong expertise and the educational background. So every single one of you has something to contribute to the board. Imagine how it would be if you were putting it all together and then realign the corporation, which will help with what you talked about, Ms. Vaughn.
So, oh, we are adjourned.
Thank you. I'm trying to get her to.